Good evening, everybody, and welcome.[12.42][12.42](laughter) Good evening. If you want to sit down, please do. And if you prefer to stay standing, that's fine. But we're about to honor some of our longtime employees, and we want you to hear every word. So, city clerk, what'd you call the role?
Councilmember DuBois. Vice Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Holman. Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. So this evening, we are very fortunate to have a number of employees who have served our city well and for a long time, so we're absolutely delighted. I'm going to read a proclamation, and then, Jim, you are going to say another word or two. Am I correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
And it will help a lot if I put on my glasses. And then, we're going to ask you to all come up and join us down here, and we'll take a picture of everyone. So, this is Public Service Recognition Week, and it's from May 6th to May 14th. So, I'll do one whereas and then skip the rest of them. Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working, and across the nation, public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And many public servants risk their lives every day in service to the people of our communities, as well as provide safety inspections, operate our public facilities, and provide the diverse services demanded by the American people and the Palo Alto people with integrity and efficiency. And public service provide the institutional knowledge, experience, and continuity that supports the long-term sustainability of our community assets and organizational history. And here in our city, our staff promotes and sustains this superior quality of life in our city, and in partnership with our community, delivers cost-effective services in a personal, responsive, and innovative manner. Whereas, over the past year alone, and here come these great statistics, our city staff have provided service to nearly 73,000 electric, water, and gas consumer accounts. They have resurfaced 40 miles of streets, processed more than 19,000 procurement card transactions totaling 8 million to support city operations, checked out more than 1.5 million library items to over 1 million visitors. They've welcomed 9% of Palo Alto residents to a local or neighborhood park at least once, presented more than 180 public safety education presentations, trainings, or other sessions, and offered nearly 800 recreational classes, programs, maintain parks, preserve more than 4,000 acres of open space, and much more, all with the professionalism we know and appreciate, day in and day out. Now therefore, I, Liz Niss, the Mayor of Palo Alto, do hereby proclaim that May 6th, 2018 to May 12th, 2018 is a Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to reorganize, wrong word, to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city, and especially our Palo Alto employees. So would all of my colleagues join me in a big round of applause for our public employees?[273.14][273.14](applause) Thank you so much, and I'm now turning it over to our city manager, Jim Keen.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for those really nice words. I was listening to you as you read the proclamation and just giving some short examples of what our staff does in the course of a year. I was thinking, if you just kept reading what really happened, it would even last longer than a whole city council meeting, which would be saying something. But I just want to leave you with one last thought. It's maybe not that appropriate. In May, it would be much better in December if we were lined up waiting to get into the Stanford Theater to see that classic Frank Capra movie about, you know, called "It's a Wonderful Life."
Right.
And "It's a Wonderful Life" here in Palo Alto. I just would think for a second, if we were to substitute Jimmy Stewart character, and if you remember that movie, sort of, "How important am I," or whatever, and what happens in that movie, of course, is, in one sense, it's sort of like, he gets to experience how different his town, Bedford Falls, would be if he wasn't there. And I would just sort of ask, maybe we think, from time to time in this city, if the employees of this city were suddenly not here, that would be "It's a Wonderful Life" magnified 1,000-fold, as far as the impact, and how much we would all really recognize, you know, that everyday contribution in 1,000 different ways, that people who work for the city touching the lives of people who live here and who visit here and work here. So, again, I would just say it, I'm personally very honored to be in the company of the employees we have serving this city. So, we do want to, in particular, recognize 12, I think I have 12 here or so, employees who've served 30 or more years. Not everyone is in attendance, but I do want to first read all of their names, and then I'll go back and invite the ones who are here this evening. So, first of all, we have Frank Alvarado, who is in utilities; we have Jim Amores, who is in Public Works; we have Mary Constantino, who is in the Community Services Department; we have Curtis Dunn, who is also in Community Services; we have Taha Fatah in Utilities; we have Ravine Mann, who is in Utilities; we have Barry Marchizio, and we're now moving into 35 years, who is in Fire; we have Barbara Texiera, who is in Police, 30 years; Vicki Tran, who is in Library for 35 years; David Williams in Utilities; and Scott Young in Utilities also, all 30 years. So, when the mayor said, "Everybody comes up here," that doesn't mean everybody in the audience.[504.12][504.12](laughter) That means everybody who is being recognized for 30 or 35 years' service. So, Jim Amores, Mary Constantino, Curtis Dunn, Taha Fatah, Ravine Mann, Barbara Texiera, and Vicki Tran, if you all would come up here into, what do we call this area? This sort of area?
The front.
Okay, we won't use it tonight. It's much more elevated than we usually refer to. So, guys, just come up here.[534.16][534.16](applause) Yeah, we get the council down with you. Unfortunately, you may be stuck in the back no matter what, you know?[556.29][556.29](laughter) You get the council there behind you.
Are you afraid of your shorts?
Yeah.[568.82][568.82](laughter) Why don't we get the employees in the front and the council behind you, okay? With one exception.
Step over.
Okay, here, yeah, step up, you guys. Employees.
Closer.
Employees in the front, council in the back. They put you on the end, though.[585.16][585.16](laughter) For good reason.[587.66][587.66](laughter) Okay, well, two council members have disappeared.[595.12][595.12](laughter) Greg, can you tighten up a little bit the picture? That is a wide-angle lens, but, yeah. Okay, one, two, three.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you especially to those who have been here more than 35 years. That's a very impressive number.
All city employees who choose to are welcome to go home.[659.36][659.36](laughter)
Jim?
Unless you have an agenda item on the table.
Jim, Jim, some of our colleagues may wish to speak to them.
All right, wait, wait, wait. Wait a minute, wait a minute. (whistle)
That was good. That works.
I think you may want to, some of our council members want to speak to you all.
I don't want to get between anyone and their food, so I'll be quick. Just, as one example of the service that our city employees provide for residents, before I was ever on city council, I remember Kurt Dunn helped me out when I had just finished a hike in Fields Park, and I was exhausted, and my brain wasn't working too well, and I locked my keys in my car along with my phone.[706.32][706.32](laughter) He and other members of the staff were so helpful in helping me figure out how to get to a phone, how to make a call, how to call my insurance, have somebody come out and help me help with the tow truck. It just, those little anecdotes that we all have who live in the city, of city employees who have helped us out when we needed it. So, thank you all.[726.41][726.41](applause)
That's true. And I'm well aware that somebody has probably rescued the cat out of the tree, gone to look at the hanging branch that was about to, you know, destroy somebody's roof. And I know that it practically filled potholes in the middle of the night. So, thank you all, and I would say just what Cory did, don't forget to go and eat the food.[761.62][761.62](laughter) So, thank you all for being here.[764.75][764.75](applause) So, our next, let's just give it a couple of minutes for people to leave the room.
Ballots?
Yes. And for my colleagues, your ballots are in front of you. You can fill them out at any point.[788.91][788.91](background noise) I'm not sure you are. He doesn't, yeah.
Why not?
Because otherwise, it's just hanging.
You just wanted to notice it anyway, right?
Yeah, but we've now scheduled it. It's a lie, but you don't have to, but...
No one's a poor, you have to request it, is that? What's important is if it does get a hold of it. What's important is if it does.[837.48][837.48](background noise)
So, thank you, everyone. So, we now have appointments of three candidates to the Public Art Commission and two candidates to the Utilities Advisory Commission for three-year terms that end in May of 2021. So, if you all have voted, then David will pick up your ballots. And once he has picked them up, we will go on to the next thing, which is Agenda Changes, Additions, and Deletions, which is on the next page.
Madam Mayor, it's not a change from the packet that did go out, but it was just sort of last minute, and that is a consent calendar item number three relating to the water transfer between the City of Palo Alto and the City of East Palo Alto has been moved to be the first action item on your agenda, which will be action item number 7A. Thank you. 6A, excuse me.
So, I just want to make sure we're taking that off. Do we need to vote on that? Is one motion or separate it out?
Beth?
What if they vote up to move it?
Why don't you vote to move it, just to be clear?
Do you have the agenda?
Okay, we can vote on it in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, number four, number three on the consent calendar is now going to be, what number?
6A.
6A. Okay, with no further discussion of that, could I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, would you vote on the board? Okay, that passes us to the city manager comments for this evening. We've had a very full evening already.
Madam Mayor, give me one second here. You just disappeared on me. Here we are.
You want to do about the last action item? I'm not moving that.
Oh, yes. Madam Mayor, I think the city clerk reminded me that we should announce at this point also that item number nine on tonight's agenda, which was a public hearing related to our transportation impact fees, given the other items on your agenda tonight, and the fact that it was not time-sensitive as far as meeting any particular deadline, that has been removed from tonight's agenda, and we'll bring it back at a date.
We have a date of August 13th?
Correct.
It's a date certain. Correct.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that separately or not?
Matt, Mommy.
Okay, so I need another motion and a second. A motion, a second?
What was the date? August 13th.
August 13th.
Second.
Okay, if there's no discussion on that, number nine will be moved to August 13th, which is our first meeting after the recess. Thank you, and that takes us back to our city manager and any comments he wishes to make tonight.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I have a number of things to report on. First of all, this Thursday, May 10th, is the 24th Annual Bike to Work Day. Our city has been participating in this green commute choice for 19 years, and as usual, we are hosting four Energizer volunteer stations positioned at key commute locations from 6:30 a.m. to 9 a.m. this Thursday. They are at the Alma Bike Bridge at El Palo Alto, north going south, to at the City Hall on Bryant Street, right outside, at the California Avenue Caltrain Station near the fountain, and last but not least, at the Wilkie Way Bike Bridge near Monroe Drive and Miller Avenue at the south end of town. Bike commuters can ride, pick up a canvas bag, a snack, and other giveaway items while supplies last. Each station has its own unique flair. The Wilkie Way Station will be cooking up pancakes. You can get your bike tuned up at the Alma Bike Bridge, learn about planning and transportation projects at the City Hall location, and at our busiest station on Cal Avenue, you can join lots of fellow cyclists. Palo Alto, as you know, has been recognized by the League of American Bicyclists as a bicycle-friendly community, and a bicycle mapping tool is available at www.511.org to plan your bike trip in advance. I mentioned briefly at the earlier reception in the foyer out front this evening, for employees that, backed by popular demand, our Palo Alto Municipal Service Center Open House will be taking place this Saturday as we honor employees throughout the week of Public Service Week. Join us for a behind-the-scenes look at city services that keep our community running. There'll be fun activities, demonstrations, displays, showcases of some of the behind-the-scenes work that takes place to operate a city will be held at the Municipal Service Center from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m., and that is at 3201 East Bay Shore Road. The event is free and open to the public, so people can bring the family out for fun and educational day. Lots of fun things to do and meet people who work for the city. I think last year, in just the inaugural one, we had over 600 people show up for that. I think I will have a photo on the next one, and I'm looking around. I don't mean to misjudge our audience here, but I think we're making some progress looking at the audience about the issue with the Middlefield and Embarcadero intersection. As you know, we've heard, you've heard from a number of community members about that new intersection work there. And last week, certainly, there were a number of speakers who came to council as part of the repaving project along Middlefield Road, actually from the Menlo Park border all the way to Oregon, and in conjunction with the construction of what's called a Dutch-style protected intersection, which is one that offers protection to cyclists at intersections regardless of whether they're turning left or continuing straight. There was a new, more efficient traffic signal that has been just recently installed at that intersection. In addition, the approaching lanes on Middlefield Road have been redesigned to accommodate current traffic demands. The new traffic signal was, actually, the sort of curb and sidewalk improvements were made months and months ago, but it was just in the past couple of weeks, actually, on April 22nd, that the, that the traffic signal was activated, leading, I think, to a lot of the complaints and concerns that we had. The intersection has been repaved as of April 28th, and final striping was completed on May 1st. The only remaining work at the intersection is the insulation of bollards at the corners and the relocation of the southbound bus stop to a spot closer to Lowell Avenue, which will allow buses to pull out of traffic when stopping. The new signal timing was designed to have much less delay for motorists who travel along both of those streets, which we know can get significantly backed up. But you heard concerns from parents and students biking and walking to and from Walter Hayes Elementary School, and that really had to do with dealing with this now sort of two-stage crossing that was required because of the way the phasing on the signals were changed. There is less delay for everyone, but during the heaviest 30-minute period, the corners of the intersection, you heard, fill up with bikers and walkers and students, really much more congested and were the cause of concern. So, our staff actually has been out there from the very get-go, working many ways round the clock, engaging with parents and folks, and I think led to the fact that, you know, there were hesitancy to criticize our staff for the work, given their response, but clearly, the problem was genuine. So, as I mentioned last week, we immediately installed a second crossing guard. There's always one crossing guard there, because prior to these changes, there was a diagonal crossing that would take place during the AM and PM school hours. And we're looking at whether or not even second one in the short term needs to be put in place. However, we are reintroducing the all-red pedestrian phasing on May 14th, so it's essentially going back to the way the signals would operate as it relates to the pedestrian traffic. We do it sooner, but we have to finish the requisite testing of the phasing adjustment, and so by this time next week, we should be back with the old operation. This will mean that, you know, during that period, you know, be, you know, slight impact on the traffic components, but it provides for the safety and the comfort that you've heard many, many justified expressions on. At that point, the second crossing guard won't be necessary. We'll be able to go back to the approach that we used in the past, because there'll be all-way red stops around there during these two 30-minute periods in the morning and afternoon. That being said, for the other 23 hours of the day, when we're not really dealing with crossings, the phasing on the traffic signal should provide improved flow through those intersections. So, I do want to thank Josh Mello, the Chief Transportation Official, and his staff for scrambling to make these adjustments. It became very clear once we actually implemented it. If I need to provide you additional information reports, we'll be sure to do that. Okay, moving on.
Jim, may I just make a quick comment? That is right in my neighborhood, and I think all of you have probably gotten comments, but I think it's going to be an enormous relief to that school and to the kids and the parents that that has happened, and I just want to say how much I really appreciate it.
Agreed.
That's, I don't know what that's commonly called. It was once called a barn dance because of somebody named Barnes.
Yeah, it's a barn dance. It's called a pedestrian scramble. Boy, none of those sound very good. Maybe they're accurate descriptions. That was the, that was sort of the situation, so we're back to...
Yeah, so I think it's what feels safer to parents.
Yep.
And I think the safety aspect of it is what's the most important.
Thanks.
So, thank you for facilitating that.
Well, I don't want to underestimate how much time and effort our staff has put into this, and I know that there are times that in the process of design, you know, some approaches and measures can seem to meet all of the goals of a project, and then it's in real-life implementation that suddenly you can kind of push on, but our folks have...
In truth, it's an awkward location for an elementary school, but given that it was first there 100 years ago, it's not so surprising. But thanks, and thanks to all the staff on that.
Good, thank you. Well, on a different note, have you ever seen a construction project on a street and wondering what's happening? Palo Alto, our city has just launched a beta online tool to help, which is called Heads Up, that looks to give real-time information on street closures impacting our city's roadways for four hours or more. These are construction projects that are happening in the public right-of-way. You can register to receive notifications that could impact your route to school, work, or other places around town. Just go to cityofpaloalto.org/headsup, all one word, to register. It is a beta, so you'll be helping us improve and perfect this notification tool. Okay, on a more frustrating note, you may have been aware, but online access to the My Utilities account billing system, billing and payment system, has been interrupted and unavailable since Saturday evening, May 5th. The prolonged outage is a result of complications during the renewal of the system's security certificates, which ensure online communication is safe and protected. Our staff continues to work on restoring online services and plans to email users, informing them of the interruption. As an alternative to the My Utilities account, residents are being directed to access their account balance, payment history, and make credit card payment over the phone in this temporary period using the Utilities 24/7 Interactive Voice Response Phone System. We're calling customer service at 650-329-2161. Our staff will be waiving, obviously, any late fees while online payment services are unavailable, and I can speak for myself, Assistant City Manager, Utilities General Manager, Ed Chikata, been getting regular updates through the... Ed Chikata, been getting regular updates through the weekend from our IT staff on their progress or their problems they were having with getting this wrapped up. So, we'll keep you posted. Quick note on the MayFET Parade, which last Saturday had more than 2,000 participants. Featured neighbors abroad as the grand marshal, as you know. And a new this year, parade floats were eligible for cash prizes, thanks to generous support of our MayFET fair sponsors, the Palo Alto Recreation Foundation, Stanford Federal Credit Union, and Kaiser Permanente. Alone Elementary School won third place, the prize of $125. Our school, our school, excuse me, won second place with a prize of $250, and our first-place winner was First School with a prize of $500. Lastly... Looking around. I did want to acknowledge that this is Planning Director Hillary Gilman's last scheduled city council meeting, and probably no more fitting tribute to her time here than the fact that we removed the only planning item from the council agenda, and she doesn't have to be here tonight. She's only spent, she's been here four and a half years and has spent about four years of it in city council or Planning Commission meetings. But I do want to, on behalf of the staff and with the city council, acknowledge her contributions in four and a half years. She came here in 2013. As our city sort of moved in some new directions as far as growth management, despite our concerns, took leadership positions within the region as it relates to managing and restricting office development unparalleled by any other jurisdiction, and driven by our city council, completing the comprehensive plan, working through neighborhood after neighborhood of design and implementation of residential permit, parking programs, dealing with all sorts of code enforcement issues, and just processing numerous applications, intense involvement with the community. Want to thank Hillary really for her hard efforts and her work. And her last day with the city will be May 11th, and just wish her the best of luck in the next phase of her career. Thank you.
She is not here tonight, is she?
No, she is not.
Okay, so we'll have to search her out during the week or give her a call?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good, thanks very much. So, Ms. Minor, I believe you have news.
I do, Mayor. The results for the Public Art Commission ballot, we have Councilmember DeBois voting for Lauren Gordon, Ian Klaus and Ben Miyagi, Councilmember Phil Seth voting for Lauren Gordon, Bonnie Hall and Ben Miyagi, Councilmember Fine voting for Lauren Gordon, Ian Klaus and Shannon McEntee, Councilmember Holman voting for Lauren Gordon, Ian Klaus, Ben Miyagi, Mayor Niss voting for Lauren Gordon, Shannon McEntee and Ben Miyagi, Councilmember Koo voting for Lauren Gordon, Ian Klaus and Ben Miyagi, Councilmember Tanaka voting for Lauren Gordon, Yem Kim and Ian Klaus, Councilmember Wolbach voting for Lauren Gordon, Ian Klaus and Shannon McEntee, Lauren Gordon with eight votes, Ian Klaus with six, and Ben Miyagi with five have all been appointed to the Public Art Commission.
Good, thank you very much. Are any of those appointees in here tonight? Okay, congratulations to all of them. And second?
For the Utilities Advisory Commission, Councilmember DeBois, Phil Seth, Fine, Holman, Niss, and Koo all voted for Arnie Ballantyne and Mike Danaher. Councilmember Tanaka voted for Yutong Wong and Henry Wong. So, Arnie Ballantyne and Mike Danaher are both appointed to the UAC with seven votes each.
Good, thanks very much. And again, are any of them here? Sometimes it's hard to see when the light is behind you, so congratulations to them as well. And that takes us back to, by this time, we should be at Oral Communications. I just misplaced my... So, we are running almost right on time. We have Oral Communications as they're listed up on the board, and the Vice Mayor is going to tally the time tonight, so welcome, see you ready. We can do three minutes. Greetings.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council and all the staff. It's wonderful to see 30 years of service of that many people in the city of Palo Alto. This reminds me of my old Hughes Aircraft Company, where a company of that size, an organization like City of Palo Alto, you know, you're able to work and retire or do other things successfully. So, it's an achievement for the people that run the organization, so I think congratulations, Jim Keane and his staff. Thank you. I also thank you for somebody taking care of the pothole in front of the Jack-in-the-Box. I know it was a trivial item for some, but it's a good item, so you didn't have to get your car worked on. Thank you. The second thing that I want to bring up, which most of you know, is the June 5th primary. This is the opportunity for the citizens of Palo Alto and the neighboring communities to express your vote, how you feel about the government, what, who you want to represent. There are 32 candidates already announced for the US Senate, including Dan Feinstein as incumbent, and 27 for governor, and all that. So, what's important is to pay attention to what each of them are saying and express your right to vote and be there. Thank you. I am going to be not on the 32 list. I decided not to. I support Dan Feinstein, but I have things to talk about, so I'm going to be a write-in candidate. I'm working on that. Also, you know, we have already reached almost $4 a gallon gas in town, plus and minus, plus or minus 15, 20 cents. Thanks for Mark Berman supporting Governor Brown for all that infrastructure tax. I'm saying it cynically, we didn't need that. We could have, we have a lot of people that are impacted by that kind of a cost, so I would like for us to consider why we'd need that at this point, and it's not affordable. The last thing is, I always look at the worldview, and I think on May 12th, the President is going to most likely decide to disband on the Iran nuclear deal. So, Iran needs to step up, and if they want to be a world leader, they need to work with Saudis and to have a peace for Muslims. They need to work with, they need to be manly enough between both Iran and Israel. They need to sit down like big boys and have a peace, Middle East peace. It's not acceptable to have five, six million refugees sitting right next to you, and you have loaded guns and all the weapons you have and somebody else can't have. So, there's something missing. So, I think they need to grow up and work for peace. The reason I'm bringing this up is because you are, a lot of influential people are on the hills and everywhere, including former Secretary of States, all that. You can influence the, and tell your friends of Iran or Israel to be big boys and work for peace. We need world order. I think we also need to work with Russia. Thank you.
Thank you. Shani Kleinhaus.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Shani Kleinhaus. I'm here on behalf of the Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. Palo Alto started a project to maintain the Emily Rensselaar wetlands that involved moving the dirt out, reinforcing the burms, and removing cattails. They talked to us a while ago. They promised not to remove the reeds during the nesting season, and all the work that was supposed to be done during the nesting season was draining the pond, not removing the reeds. By now, more than half of the reeds were covered with imported or excavated soil, so less than half remain. The city said that they did do a nesting bird survey prior to beginning of this work. However, when you're going to dump soil on top of reeds where animals may be nesting, a nesting survey at the beginning of the season is just not good enough. It's like, first, the bird will come, start to nest, maybe there's work happening nearby, but they still start their nest, and then, oops, we have a few tons of dirt to put on top of you. I went there yesterday. There was a killdeer that was trying to lure me away from its nest. They do this injured bird trick, where they pretend to be injured and walk you away from the nest. Today, that was gone. That site got covered and leveled. I went out there with Phil Bobble earlier today. I asked to stop covering the reeds until after the nesting season. I think that will happen now. I asked to leave refugia when the project moves forward, so some of the creatures that live there, like the muskrat that I saw yesterday, will have somewhere to stay while the project moves forward. I asked to reconfigure the plan to create a mosaic of areas with or without cattails so that you have more biodiversity and bird diversity supported by that. And I asked for a biologist on site, so any time that they do need to impact an area during the nesting season, somebody actually looks at the behavior of the bird, not just looking for nests, but looking for a killdeer that's trying to lure you away from the nest. That tells you there is a nest there, and you shouldn't be covering it with dirt, or other birds that are there, and they're, you can hear them, you can see them, they're nesting there. This is the height of the nesting season, and it really is the wrong time to cover all of that with dirt. So, thank you. I hope you pay attention to this, and I hope staff works with us to create, to stop what's happening there right now and to come up with a better plan moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I think staff was nodding, Shani. Former Councilmember Emily Rensselaar.
I'm here, Mayor Niss and members of the council. I too have concerns about the expansion of the project contemplated right now during the nesting season. Originally, the idea was to drain the wetland so that access could be gotten to this area, but then, as they got into it, they realized they needed to do other stuff and started doing it without the right biological evaluations. And I'm glad that Shani has talked to staff, and it looks like the matter is being resolved. But I think it's terribly important that a project like this, which was a beneficial-use project intended to create habitat, is being so seriously disrupted during the nesting season. So, I just want to bring it to your attention and hope that the matter will be resolved in an amicable way, because we really want that to be good habitat. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And David Shen, followed by Arnold Ferring.
Hi. Before I begin, I just want to say it's a thrill and a delight when you walk into city council meeting and then you hear the city manager actually talking about the solution to your problem. So, regardless, here goes. Distinguished city council members and staff, my name is Dave Shen. I have two kids that attend Walter Hayes Elementary. Last week, I was here talking about the need for change at the Embarcadero-Middlefield intersection, where every day, many of Walter Hayes Elementary students cross to attend school. If you'll recall, I ride my three-wheeled cargo bike with my two kids through that intersection twice daily to bring them to and from school. I applaud the city's action to provide us with a second crossing guard in the mornings. An actual police presence has had a noticeable calming effect on drivers, who now can fear citations if they do something unsafe. However, it's still not enough. The intersection still remains dangerous for our children, cyclists, and pedestrians. At a minimum, we need a second crossing guard in the afternoons when school lets out. The same problem exists then as it does in the mornings. One crossing guard cannot simply guide two simultaneous crossings at one time. The current situation is not safe. At a higher level, the size of the northwest and southeast corners remains the same small corners as they were prior to the change. Let me emphasize again, this intersection is not physically built to handle large groups of cyclists and pedestrians on those corners. This then leads to the burning need to reinstate the diagonal crossing light sequence immediately. Any crossing sequence that forces large groups of cyclists and pedestrians onto the tiny northwest and southeast corners is an accident waiting to happen, with cyclists and pedestrians spilling onto the street because they cannot physically fit on all those corners. Staff and council members, I cannot emphasize this anymore. We desperately need the diagonal crossing light sequence back right now. Please, please help us protect the young children, Walter Hayes Elementary. Everyday delay is one more day of exposing them to unsafe crossing conditions. Thank you for your time.
And as you said, you heard that staff is already on the problem. Arnold Ferring.
Good evening, council members and staff. Same issue. Thank you very much for working very hard on this issue, but I still would like to tell you what I think and my perspective. I've been a resident of Palo Alto since 2011, and I'm a father of two children, one who's nine years old and one who's five, and both are going or will go to Walter Hayes. I follow closely the news of our community. I've never been actively involved in any protest. Today is my first time to speak in front of the city council. Thank you for welcoming me. The reason why I felt compelled to come here, to sign petition, to join other parents, to write emails to your staff, who responded, thank you very much, is because walking my kids to school has become the most dangerous and stressful time of my day. There are three points I'd like to highlight. First, the current setup is very dangerous for the children and their parents. Second, the city is sending the wrong message to their residents by pushing such a change. Finally, the school is ending soon, and we need to revert this change ASAP. There's no time for experiment anymore. With the new crossings, the school drop-off and pickup have become an obstacle course for me. Even with the presence of a police officer as a second crossing guard, cars and trucks try to make the right turn, as if it was a normal intersection. Many of us have to shout and use our body as a shield for our children. I physically banged on the window of a car to stop the driver who cut me and my daughter off, refusing us the right of way. This time of the day used to be peaceful. Again, it's now very, very stressful. This change isn't serving the community. The motivations are not clear. Are we putting traffic flow ahead of school safety? This is negatively impacting residents of Palo Alto, while this prioritizes only some residents and a good portion of non-residents who commute into Palo Alto. Everyone using this crosswalk are residents, walking their kids to school. Finally, I urge you to revert this diagonal crossing, to revert to the diagonal crossing light sequence. We're not talking about discomfort or discontent. It's a matter of public safety. Walter Hayes students are young. My five and nine-year-old, they trust the whistle of the crossguard. They go ahead as soon as they hear it. There are 18 days left of school. There has been enough experimentation, and parents are tired to have their children used as guinea pig. Please revert and roll back.
And I would say the same thing. You heard that staff is definitely engaged.
Hi, I'm Amy Darling, and I'm back to talk about the same subject. I just want to say that we started our petition, and we wound up with 150 signatures about this issue, and I think this is a great example of citizens getting involved in their local community and fighting for their children's concerns. And I think we've educated a lot of people in the town, which has been a really positive thing. I applaud Josh Mello, the city council members and staff, for listening to our concerns and doing the right thing, reinstating the four-way stop, so that our young students can get to school safely. While this is scheduled to take place next Monday, I urge you, and we would love it, if there's any way to speed up the process and reset the light so it can be effective immediately this week. Thank you again for your time and concern and for listening to us. We really appreciate it.
Great, thank you for coming. Stephanie Munoz. We wondered where you were, Stephanie.
Oh, my ride, my ride was not available, and so Ed Dangler brought me over here. He's my neighbor, and I knocked on his door, and he said, "Say hello to Liz when you go over there." That's why. Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. I'm here to talk about, guess what, affordable housing. I was looking through my papers today, and I ran into a letter... I was looking through my papers today, and I ran into a letter I had written several years ago, to a man who was executor of an estate, where the man wanted his property, his house, sold, so as to provide money to make a shelter for homeless women. And I had written, "No, no, 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 no. Don't give up the house, because you will never, ever get the value of it." The house I had at the time, four-bedroom house, rented for $4,000 a month. And you could see, if you had eight homeless women, and they each paid $500, that would be normal. That would be a normal multi-person house for Palo Alto, and wouldn't bother anybody if they didn't have cars, which homeless women mostly don't. Well, now, that's not true anymore, because the value of a property keeps going up. So, the affordable keeps going down in relation to it. And I'm here to beg you to do what you can now, while you still could have a beautiful hotel for retired, starting with retired people, that don't smoke and don't drink soda pop. Well, you could narrow your idea, but mostly, they wouldn't have cars, and they could have a van, if you had several hundred of them, and they'd never bother anybody. But you have to do it for the few pieces of property that you have left. And I think it's the only way that you're going to get those cars off the street. There are other ways to get housing. The employers could build housing, and the United States could take over the veterans. And there are other things, the teachers, the school district could build housing. But to get those cars off the street, if you clustered the people together and got them a van, just one, or even a passenger car, you could make it work. And I urge you to give some consideration to having a hotel for older people, where they would spend $600 a month, on their little 200-square-foot bedroom and bathroom and a nice big balcony, and you'd have them housed. And it would be an asset to Palo Alto. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in oral communications, so if anyone else wants to speak to oral communications, which means something that's not on the agenda, this is the time to let us know. Okay. Anyone speaking on, all right, in that case then, as you recall, we have a, if you've been here for a while, we have a new item tonight, which will be called 6A. And, thank you. But I have a feeling they want to talk about the water. So, let me tell people who might be here now but weren't here before. An item on the consent calendar, which deals with our water transfer, was taken off the consent calendar, and now is the next item we're going to speak to. And I believe, Beth, we called that Item 6A. Am I correct? So, Item 6A is now one that was on the consent calendar, and that is number three. So, let me read to you what this says.
Can we move the consent calendar?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So, I'll move consent.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So, I'm hearing from the vice mayor that two speakers want to speak to the consent calendar, not to the new Item 6A. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in that case, let us call on, let's see how I'm going to do with these names. Shirley Wei, and the second person is, last name, I think, is Lynn. Is that correct?
Saushe Lu. Shirley Wong.
Shirley, it's a good thing the vice mayor's here. Shirley Wong.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
Is that correct? Madam Mayor? And the other person's last name is Lu?
Oh, no, yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, please. Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
So, you're speaking to Item Number Six on the consent calendar.
Right. Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here for-
Madam Mayor, before we start onto the consent calendar, can I please make a clerical correction to the calendar? And I want to do this before the public, in case they're going to speak to the item, so they'll know. We made an error in printing Item Number Six for you, and I'd like to explain it. And thanks to Councilmember Fine for spotting it in the fine print of the attached ordinance. So, this is the second reading of the Affordable Housing overlay. And on Item, on page 101 of your packet, which is the fifth page of the ordinance attached to Number Six, there's a table that talks about the parking requirement, and we failed to conform that to council's motion when adopting the ordinance on first reading. So, at the top of the page there, it currently says .75 per bedroom or unit, whichever is greater. That is an error. It should say .75 per unit, except as preempted by state law. So, the words "bedroom or" and "whichever" or "greater" should be struck. Thank you.
Should I start? Okay, so that is now corrected. This is a long item. Did anyone notice any other corrections that needed to be made while it's live and in public? Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Fine. And Councilmembers Holman and Koo, have your light on.
But we should hear from the public first, and then, because they want to register a no vote.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. In that case then, thank you, Eric. We are back to Shirley Wong. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to urge you to reconsider AHCD ordinance overlay, especially for the parking requirement. I live on Wayton, on our street near El Camino. There are already multi-unit housing without enough parking for the families, plus a restaurant with less than 20 onsite parking spaces. Our street is already congested with street parking. The number of VTA riders is constantly dropping over the years. The number of Palo Alto traffic accidents, especially involving schoolkids, is increasing. Living near the bus stop doesn't mean giving up the ownership of cars. For the sake of our street safety, please provide enough onsite parking for AHCD. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's what Karen wants to do as well. Yes, and the second person's last name is Lynn or Lu?
Lu.
Do you know what it is?
Lu.
Lu.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, my last name is Liu. Yeah, also a resident of Wayton Avenue, and I'm here to urge members of you to consider, especially, an echo on the problem, on the issue of the parking. So, you know, it's already a restaurant across the street of the new construction site. It's every mealtime, or lunch, or dinner, so all the street is crowded, crowded with the customers' cars. So, we expect the new construction will provide, like, alleviate this problem. So, okay, so we just tried to join the voice, so here, I hope you can listen to the voice of our residents, to keep our more peaceful and safe area of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Okay, and now, Councilmember Koo and Councilmembers Holman. Councilmember-
Because we vote on consent first, and then they get to talk.
No, first they get to talk to register a no vote, or whatever they're doing.
Yeah. And that's what you want to do, register a no vote?
Yes, I want to register a no vote on Item Six, on the consent calendar.
Same.
Yes, I want to register a no vote on Item Number Six, consistent with my prior vote.
Thank you. And now we are ready to vote.
Mayor Niss, Mayor Niss, can you also include, "At places tonight is a memo regarding a change in Agenda Item Four"? If you can include that in the motion to make that correction for Item Four.
So, I'll move the consent calendar with the addition of the memo for Item Four.
Okay. Okay, it was a motion and a second.
And the change to the language in the Item Six.
And the correction to Item Six.
I think that's already been changed, I hope. So, when we vote on this, we are voting for the change language in Item Number Six.
It's helpful to have it in the motion. I appreciate Councilmember DuBois adding that to the motion. Madam Mayor, so the public knows, and those of us who haven't even found that memo yet, because it's at places, along with a lot of other stuff, can we understand what that correction to Item Number Four is?
I don't see the place.
Can you read that into the public record, please?
And I don't either, so-
Correction, Item Number Four.
Mayor Niss, Mayor Niss, the correction that is in there, staff approval with the intent to supplement existing department funding with funds from the Law Enforcement Services Fund, known as COPS, to purchase cameras. Apparently, the not-to-exceed amount remains at $110,000, and that the funding usage for COPS cannot supplant existing funding, and must be for new technology or equipment benefiting frontline law enforcement efforts. And I believe this was actually in your packet that was delivered on last Thursday.
So, this is consistent with what was delivered to us?
Correct.
Even if the language is different here?
Correct. That's what was delivered to you last Thursday, and it was put up on the website as a memo also, so that the public could see it, and it was in the back of the room also.
Thank you for the correction, because it did sound like it was something new at places, so thank you.
Okay, so with the correction to Item Number Four, and with the correction to Item Number Six, which is the one that was made by Councilmember Klein, and two council members voting no, have we missed anything that needs to go into the motion? If not, let's vote on the board. And that passes unanimously, and we have one member absent tonight. Greg Scharf is not here. But the others have voted yes, except as is indicated on the board.
So, do Karen and Lydia get to speak further now, or now they can speak to them?
If they wish to. Yeah, uh-huh, yes. So, the question is, do either of you, who have voted no on this, wish to speak further to your motion, I mean, to your no vote?
I think the record in the minutes of April 9 explained fully my reasons for voting against this. It is certainly not for lack of support of affordable housing, but my view is the 120% AMI did not accomplish what our established goal was. Councilmember Koo?
Thank you. So, on this Affordable Housing Combining District Ordinance, it does not put community first. Urban planning exists to serve the people and the community. However, today, the academics influence has churned out urban planners reciting the same doctrine. Density and more density is the only acceptable form of urban living, according to the so-called New Urbanists. The New Urbanist doctrine even goes as far to use spin messaging, using social justice to make their moral case for high density and even environmental considerations. This AH Affordable Housing Combining District Ordinance, while stating it is affordable, can end up being abused and misused to build 80% to 100% AMI housing mostly, which is essentially market-rate housing. Palo Alto Code and Ordinance does an injustice to the people who need housing at below the 60% AMI. Furthermore, this AH Combining District is proposed for near-high-quality transit corridor. There are no high-quality transit in the peninsula, let alone Palo Alto. Which high-quality transit are we comparing to? To the transit in Hong Kong, Malaysia, New York, Shanghai? Calling transit here high-quality is a joke. No one is serious about building truly sustainable and viable transportation, yet the mediocre transit that is available is being touted as high-quality. It is a low bar to set for high-quality. What is worse and misguided is to use this mediocre-quality transportation to push development and building under the guise that it reduces greenhouse gas, or is smart or sustainable. I am very much in favor of zoning for affordable housing, and that is the 60% and below affordable housing, but in a manner that does not destroy or overwhelm a city or community. Our existing communities, neighborhoods, have unique character, its own makeup or DNA, and it's made up of dynamic people. One-size-fits-all mandate is an imposition that is careless and reckless. This is not the right policy for Palo Alto or for government locally. This affordable housing policy is a masquerade, using a top-down approach, putting corporations over communities, profits over people, dogma, and playing politics using housing policy and people's lives and their community values. So, I'm keeping my no vote.
It says now to Number Seven, which is a proposed CDBG allocations for fiscal year-
No, 6A, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. We have switched our numbers around tonight, so we are now back on what was once Number Three, which is now 6A. And this is the approval of the City of Palo Alto's addendum to the negative declaration adopted by the City of East Palo Alto, and approval of an agreement for the permanent transfer of a portion of the City of Palo Alto's individual supply guarantee to the City of East Palo Alto. And welcome to staff, who is going to kick off this discussion.
Thank you, Madam. Mayor, I'll turn this over to start with Assistant City Manager, Utilities General Manager, Ed Chikata.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, with that introduction, let me also just introduce Carla Daly, our Senior Resource Planner in the Utilities Department, resident expert on water supply issues. I'll provide a very brief overview. Wanted to try and encapsulate in one slide summary of the transaction that's recommended before you. This is ultimately a relatively simple action. At the same time, it may seem somewhat complicated due to the context that we're operating within our water supply system, as well as perhaps other issues that have been raised. So, let me just try to boil it down. City of Palo Alto has a contractual right to purchase, as described here, a right to buy water from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission for utility customers within the city. The recommended action before you would transfer 0.5 million gallons per day of this right-to-purchase, or right-to-buy water. And there are a few items, elements worth noting. First, that the City of East Palo Alto would pay for the water actually used, and this would be a transaction and payment to the San Francisco PUC, and that there would be no cost to the City of Palo Alto or its ratepayers. And also, no relation, really, to City of Palo Alto rates that our local ratepayers pay. Second, that this proposed transaction would reduce Palo Alto's allocation of, our current allocation of 17.1 million gallons per day by a half a million gallons per day. This is effectively negligible, given Palo Alto's current demand of roughly 10 to 11 million gallons per day. This is well below the anticipated and current needs here in Palo Alto. Third, that the recommended transaction does reflect an ongoing cooperation on a variety of topics, including limiting potential for groundwater extraction that the City of East Palo Alto would otherwise need to rely on, as well as a number of non-water-related cooperative efforts, such as advancing the replacement of the Newell Road Bridge over the San Francisco Creek, as well as traffic signal synchronization along University Avenue. Finally, there have been some references raised to the City of Mountain View's transaction with the City of, involving the City of East Palo Alto for $5 million. Would simply note that the City of Mountain View's situation is very different. City of Mountain View, in contrast to our situation, has a minimum purchase requirement with the City, or, I'm sorry, with the San Francisco PUC, where Mountain View is responsible for payment, even if the water is not- for payment even if the water is not actually used. The $5 million transaction affected with the City of East Palo Alto only partially offsets the forecast estimated $8.5 million cost that Mountain View will incur over the next several years. So with that, that was the summary I would like to provide. I did have one other slide, just for your reference. I know it's difficult to see. This is from Bosque, our Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, that provides coordination and advocacy on behalf of all of the wholesale water retailers with the SFPUC. What's shown in yellow, effectively, or six from the top, is the City of East Palo Alto's individual supply guarantee, and second from the bottom, the City of Palo Alto's water individual supply guarantee. So this is perhaps the tip of the iceberg in some ways on the complexity that exists with the supply guarantees, but is simply to provide a relative sense of East Palo Alto's allocation to Palo Alto's. And also, for reference, the City of Mountain View is on this graph about, let's see, that one, two, three, four, above the Palo Alto's allocation.
Yeah, they have approximately 13, I think 13.46 MGD in their allocation, reduced by 1 million gallons to 12.46. Ours is over 17, as Mr. Chikata pointed out. And I would point out, not only is their population larger than ours, they are growing much faster than our city is now.
So with that concludes our staff report, and we'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, I have several cards from the audience. Are there any members of any of my colleagues who want to ask a question before we go to them? Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I guess, first question is, why wasn't the Mountain View report or mention the $5 million in the staff report to us? Why wasn't that mentioned?
Well, quite frankly, this is not involving the City of Mountain View, and the Palo Alto, East Palo Alto transaction, we believe stands on its merits. And again, as the questions were raised, we're certainly happy to provide additional information related to the City of Mountain View.
We actually don't think it's a relevant comparison, to be honest with you.
Okay, so I think what you guys are trying to imply is that the water rights are worth nothing. Is that what you guys are trying to say?
No, first of all, we're not trying to imply anything. We're stating the facts of a potential agreement for consideration between the City of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. So what we are saying is that the city, in a sense, is a participant in a communal, in a communal sharing of a resource in the form of water through the SFPUC's supply of that water and through the, through Bosque, the cooperative agency that we work with. We happen to have the great good fortune to be able to buy more water than our next-door neighbor, who has had a de minimis amount and has had essentially the lowest residential water usage. And all we are proposing in response to prior discussions, at least at the prior city council had had, was whether or not we could share with our neighbor their, our ability to buy water that we're never going to use, for which, as Ed pointed out, they will have to buy and pay for. So they will be paying for this water. Now, if we're saying, should we apply a surcharge to them for our benefit, I would just say that council may want to consider, are there other factors of value between the two cities? And secondly, we did not pursue in great detail what might be involved in a sale. There's not a guarantee that the city could sell this, in any case, to East Palo Alto. There are other Bosque agencies they may go to. So I think mostly we approach this, in this particular case, as a good neighbor and that the funds, yeah, that's it for now.
Yeah, my question simply is, do the water rights have value? And, so I guess I was looking for a yes or no answer.
Yeah, I think they do.
They do have value?
Yeah, and I think they have value to East Palo Alto also.
Okay. So from what I understand, Mountain View sold 1 million gallons of water rights per day to East Palo Alto.
I'm not sure that's exactly right. I think what they did is, is they transferred 1 million gallons of the ability to buy water from their shared water supply, and in exchange for that, essentially, the East Palo Alto, as I understand it, agreed to pick up what is essentially a fine that Mountain View has to pay on an annual basis because they have a guaranteed minimum purchase. And so for a period of time, they are covering some of that, in a sense, fine or loss that Mountain View has.
When I read the Mountain View staff report, the $5 million is going to a water reserve, which could be used for anything, like infrastructure of the water, not just fines. And one thing that it said in the report, and I was trying to understand where you guys have come from on this, it said that, I don't, have you guys looked at the Mountain View report?
Yeah, we've read it.
Okay. I'm not sure if my fellow councilmembers have, but if you read the report, just I trust it, did my, did you guys all get a chance to read the Mountain View report? Okay, some of you have. If you read the report, there's only a couple of years when they weren't able to meet the minimum. And when you read the report, it also talks about how the growth in Mountain View, they have approved law of housing, law of development in Mountain View, and they got rid of drought restrictions, and that whether they will, what there is, and the staff report talks about how essentially they don't think that they're going to be hitting the minimum, they'll be above the minimum, so they won't be hitting the fines going forward necessarily. So if they don't, then they could use the money for infrastructure projects. So I guess I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand, because what's happening here, isn't that Mountain View is, Mountain View is selling a right, water rights, to East Palo Alto for $5 million?
So I respectfully disagree. I spoke to their city manager today, again, in detail to follow up on this, and this idea of this money being used for fines was not what I said. And I basically used their word, fines, that they're basically paying a penalty for water they don't use. And it makes it pretty hard for them to be able to transfer water they're paying for that they don't use to East Palo Alto. So what they, what they have done, and if you look at the graph of their usage, like many of us, as we've gone into greater conservation, their use has fallen off, and their own projections, as identified in their staff report, estimate that they could be spending up to $8.5 million over the next four or five years. It is true, and I corroborated this with their city manager, that they expect by about 2021 or 2022 that the amount of growth that they have approved will come online and will use enough demand to take them to that 8.93, is it, something like that figure, which is the guaranteed minimum purchase that they would have, at which point, the fact that they were being penalized and having to make payments for water they don't use would go away. But they fully expect that, and the $5 million they're getting from East Palo Alto is designed to offset some of that anticipated $8.5 million loss. So I would say, I guarantee you this, if I was your, if I was city manager here and we were in exactly the same situation as Mountain View, I would make that very same recommendation that we would consider selling that. Our situation is one where we have more than enough water than we need, we have the right to purchase it, and we could look at selling it, a small amount of it, .5, to a neighbor, or we could look at transferring it to somebody who in many ways missed out on the distribution of that water supply, given the timing of when their city became incorporated. It's, I would argue that there are numerous factors to consider here, and not just, can the city gain some additional money for it? And it would be interesting to see how that might even be received by our other parties in the area, that we'd be in a situation of even potentially profiting for something that we were not ever going to use. I'm not sure it's the best public policy, that's my recommendation.
Well, I guess I'm not sure it's the best public policy to give away assets of the city. The market value that was established by the Mountain View agreement would value our water rights about $2.5 million. And so I guess I'm trying, I'm struggling to understand, at the time when we're raising water rates by hundreds of dollars per family in Palo Alto, how we could justify to give away assets that could help defray the costs. So I, and so that's become my next question, which is, so we're planning to raise the rates this year on water, sewer, electric, storm drain, just about every area, gas. How much will the total be for residents here in Palo Alto for all those increases?
I don't have the information. I think we gave, we shared with, when we passed on the budget to the, the proposed budget to the council. That being said, both the UAC is looking at the recommendations.
And I think we're veering off the agenda on this one. So Greg, if the staff can address that at another point, we have other councilmembers who are waiting to speak.
Okay, actually, I sent a question in, and I got a response saying that it would be answered during this session.
That, the water rates?
Yeah, I asked.
Yeah, that's, that isn't, what we're talking about tonight is a transfer of water to East Palo Alto.
Yeah, but the nexus here is, we are dramatically increasing our utility rates, our water rates especially.
I think our water rate.
At the same time, the assets that we're giving away is a water asset that could be used to defray our utility rates, and that's where the nexus is. And so how can we be giving away a valuable water right, at the same time be raising our utility rates on our residents by hundreds of dollars per year? To me, that just seems, it seems like, now, what Mountain View did, at least from what I read in this report, is they're trying to defray some of the cost to their residents. Instead of having to raise the rates, instead of having to raise the rates, they're selling some of the water rights to East Palo Alto. So I'm just trying to understand what's missing here.
I think you've just hit it on the point, right on the head, which is, the rates are set to cover the costs. Mountain View has covered its costs, we are covering our costs. The proposed transfer has no effect on our costs.
Yeah, we, our rates do not include this .5 MGD in the calculation of the rates. That would only be into our rates if we were actually purchased, purchasing that water from the SFPUC. We would build it into our rates. Now, second, second point I would make is, that no report has established what the value of this would be, but it's 2.5 million. You maybe assume that based on what Mountain View got, but any, any purchase is based between the buyer and the seller. And lastly, I would just, I mean, I really appreciate the thought, but the water rate increases we have proposed for this year are 3% or 4%, it's not going to convert to hundreds of, hundreds of dollars of value. It certainly has some value. Have to think about how it looks, though, that a city with more than enough water, with a neighboring city with not enough, decides to sell water it has access to, to be able to use, no, I want to finish this.
Please let him finish.
To reduce its rates, because that's what the suggestion is, not to, not to reduce the rates that are built by this water being here, it's to use this water sale to reduce our rates for other water that we are buying, and asking another city to both pay for that and potentially, I'm assuming, pay for it again when they actually buy from it, buy it from SFPUC. They have to pay. So they're going to pay twice for a benefit that we're transferring, and I would ask, what do you really think, in the grand scheme of things, that's the best bargain the city could make as a neighbor?
Well, I wonder about.
Greg, we have gone off the agenda, and I'm going to ask you to pause now, we'll continue it, you may continue it during Finance Committee, but Councilmember Koo and Councilmember Fine both are waiting to speak, and we have a number of people from the audience. Councilmember Koo, you got a comment?
No question.
No?
No question.
A question?
No question.
Okay. Councilmember Fine?
Thank you, Mayor Ness. Thank you, staff, for bringing this report forward. I'd also just like to acknowledge a couple of our fellow councilmembers from East Palo Alto here tonight. Thank you for coming. A couple of questions. It seems like part of our issue here is we're trying to figure out what is a water asset, and so I was wondering if staff could speak a little bit to what is the water entitlement versus a water right versus an actual use of that water?
I'm actually, to be quite frank, not clear on the distinction that perhaps you're drawing. What's operable here is, as described here, is a right to buy. It's a right to purchase the water for the purpose, then, of distributing it to customers within the city.
Thank you. And the city manager touched on it quickly, but I was wondering if staff could quickly describe, why, why does East Palo Alto have such a low allocation compared to many other communities in this area? And if we could expand on that?
Well, I think we'll do our best, but if you do hear from East Palo Alto, you may want to be sure that they speak to that directly.
Believe it's actually a historical artifact of the way that the prior agreements, water supply agreement, had been struck among agencies.
Thank you. It's detailed a little bit in the staff report. And then, one final note, there was a point about the fixed costs could potentially be reduced as more consumers are sharing the use of that resource. Could we just describe that for the public a little bit?
Right, I mean, that's just basically speaking to how the SFP sets its rates, which is its revenue requirement divided by its sales, and so as sales go up among the 26 Bosque wholesale purchasers and the City of San Francisco itself, that reduces the cost for all the rest of us, because, like all water systems, most of the costs are fixed.
Right, and so in effect, this transfer could result in small savings for Palo Alto ratepayers.
Correct.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Holman?
Yes, two questions, please. I did not have the chance to go look up these documents, but on packet page 15, it talks about public purpose, and it talks about water conservation and responsible development, it says, as demonstrated in the water conservation section of the East Palo Alto Municipal Code. I'm not quite exactly sure where to find that in their code, and the implementation of the East Palo Alto Urban Water Management Plan. So what is, can staff be a little more specific about what is in those plans? Does it talk about using drilled wells and refurbished wells only in the case of emergency, as was discussed in the staff report? Or what's, and actually, we have three members of our East Palo Alto City Council here, and welcome.
Was that a question?
Yes, that's a question.
Well, perhaps, East Palo Alto, at the appropriate time, might want to comment on their strategies for meeting their water supply needs.
And when would be the appropriate time?
I believe we are expecting to hear testimony.
Okay, hopefully, that will be addressed during their communicate, their public comments, then.
Seeing no further questions from the council, probably the next thing is we should go to the public. And so we have a number of speakers, and the first speaker will be, we welcome to the microphone, Mayor Ruben Abricca of East Palo Alto.
Good evening, council, mayor and vice mayor and staff. We do have our city manager and assistant city manager, I think at some point, if there are some specific questions, but I am serving as the mayor this year, and I want to say that I was part of the movement to incorporate East Palo Alto, just a quick reflection. I had the honor of serving on the first city council, and I know for many years, well, one thing we were keenly aware, and we still are, is that we inherited a lot of structural, structural inequalities in our community. We had a toxic waste enterprise there, we had the county dump, we never had a pedestrian bridge over the freeway, which we're now constructing, actually, will serve as a connection to both of our communities. And we also inherited insufficient water allocation. So we didn't have the power, you might say, to negotiate as a city government. And, you know, I was just reflecting on this issue, I know there's sort of, you know, technicalities, and it took me a while to understand and know. I know there's sort of, you know, technicalities and it took me a while to understand enough. I still don't understand it all, but I do understand a few things on how this whole water, you know, supply and cost and all of that. But, you know, reflecting like this, I think, you know, we share, we share a long history. We share part of the name. And I think that, I know I speak on behalf of our community when I say that we're, we're very grateful that you are considering this item, whatever your decision is, because we feel that it is a sign of generosity, I think, in your community to even be considering sharing your water without, as I understand it, really affecting the general fund, without costing you with all that. I know there's some other particularities, but I also know that, you know, it was a few years ago, because I know many council members from both cities and other people have been discussing these kinds of issues for many years. I think about three years ago, this particular council, I think partly just seeing what has been happening, the intensity of pressures for housing, that we want to develop more affordable housing, that we need additional development for us to serve our community better, that we became very focused on a water strategy, you might say. You know, we need to get water somewhere. We need to find ways to increase our supply. And we consider everything. I think we direct our staff, they've done a great job in, in looking at everything. We, we did survey our entire land to find where we could have water, groundwater, but I want to say that one of the best things that came out is that we voluntarily did the first water, groundwater management plan in San Mateo County. And I think some of you were involved in that discussion because we do want to avoid tapping into that, but we do need, we do need some extra water. We would like to keep that as a reserve for emergencies. We've been fined, or not fined, but I think we warned by the water board that we, we don't have any place, we don't have any tanks, we don't have any reserves, we really don't have emergency water, and we entirely rely on SFPUC, which is in some ways what we like to do. And that's why I think the, the transfer from Mountain View was helpful and it keeps us from, you know, perhaps pushing into the groundwater, which I do believe we want to avoid that. We are rehabilitating one well because we had to. You know, it, it used to be there and we got, coupled up some grants and were able to do that. We, we have another place where there could be good, clean water that, you know, assuming we're able to get some extra water, we could keep that just as a reserve. In any event, I just want to finish again by saying that we are very thankful for you, for your consideration as, as our neighbors. I think the value perhaps is in the way that has been explained, I think partly by our city manager, that, you know, we live in a area where we, some of us maybe cannot be of as much help to others, but I do feel that we are helpful. I think our community, if you look at the intricacies of the social and economic fabric, I think we put in, we put in our part, you know. I, I do feel that, you know, whether it's through the employment, anyway, it's a whole web of interdependent relationships. So once again, thank you for having this on the agenda and as I mentioned, we do have some of our staff here for other particular things. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us, Your Honor.
Thanks, Mayor Abricca. And I know you have some others with you tonight, so if others wish to talk, would you fill out a card and give it to the city clerk over here on my left? So Tom Francis? Greetings.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I provided a written statement to your clerk, so I think she's passed that out. But in the interest of time tonight, I'm going to paraphrase a bit, so forgive me for, for jumping around a little bit in that statement. My name is Tom Francis. I'm the Water Resources Manager for Basca, which stands for the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. Basca's here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to basically voice our support for the recommended, recommended action that your staff has forwarded to you. Specifically, the recommendation action, recommended action would provide water necessary for East Palo Alto to move forward with their sustainable growth plans. And as you heard today from the mayor, or tonight from the mayor, those are near and dear to his heart, but I also think they're, they're important to you and important to the region as well. So specifically, if approved, the transfer will serve as an example for, and I'm going to emphasize these points, constructive, responsible, and negotiated inner-city actions. The city of, East Palo Alto receives a voluntary solution to its urgent water needs. And specifically, that would be coming from a neighbor, you, Palo Alto, and it would illustrate that you're willing to act in the interest of this broader community. And so I think that's important for you to think about as you decide whether to take this recommended, recommended action tonight. As you're aware, the city of Palo Alto, along with East Palo Alto, are among Basca's 26-member agencies. So we work with your staff as well as East Palo Alto staff on a regular basis. The recommended, recommended water transfer is made possible by this 2009 agreement, this water supply agreement that Basca helped negotiate between all of our member agencies and San Francisco PUC. So the procedures that are discussed in the document from your staff are, are well thought out. Basically, just the approval of the action tonight combined with the 1 MGD transfer by the city of Mountain View would enable East Palo Alto to consider the approval of some really important projects, a school, low-income housing development that's needed to help the community, supply jobs and, and revenue for their interests. And specifically, this water supply agreement can bring you two as communities together on some other important things that you need to consider. Infrastructure, we mentioned the housing, you've mentioned some transportation projects that are needed. Those are all things that we view, Basca views, are important for the region, not just your city, but East Palo Alto. So that ends my statement.
Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you.
Sibel Bouchon. Sibel, there you are. Greetings.
Sir, I just want to say hello to the East Palo Alto City Council, mayor, and others who've come out to speak to this report. I think that the staff has done a commendable job and they've shown that it really makes sense on every level. It makes sense to be a good neighbor. It makes sense to share resources regionally. And it also makes sense because of the difference between the economies of the two cities and the histories. So I, I believe this was already agreed to. I could be wrong about that, but if it was already agreed to, then I think it would be reprehensible to go back and renege on it. Let's see, if there's anything more, I can be very brief because it just makes sense and we need to do it. We need to do the right thing, so thank you.
Thank you for coming. Former Mayor Peter Drekmeier, followed by Rita Varell. We have mayors, former mayors tonight, current.
It's love fest. Thank you, Mayor Ness and council members. I'm here to urge you to support the water allocation transfer as recommended by staff with no strings attached. It's absolutely the right thing to do. We, we know that East Palo Alto got a real raw deal when the, the Basca allocation was divvied up. They have the lowest per capita water use in the region and yet they're constantly bumping up against this 2 MGD, million gallons per day, allocation. Here in Palo Alto, we have 17 MGD. And last year, we used less than 10 MGD. It's expected to increase slightly and then drop back down to around 10 by 2040. So we're not going to run out of water. And I know sometimes people ask the question about what happens in a drought. And we do have this allocation plan with the SFPUC and Basca that's based partly on per capita consumption and partly on allocation. But the state's always going to supersede that agreement, in my opinion, because the San Francisco PUC has a very reliable water supply. There's enough water in storage to last six years. And even at the height of the recent drought, we had three years' worth of water in storage. So other parts of the state are going to start going dry long before we do and the state's going to step in and they're going to apply their formula. So the allocation, I don't think, is going to make a difference there. Staff was absolutely correct about Mountain View. I actually talked to someone at the SFPUC today and I said, how long is this $5 million from Mountain View going to cover their penalty for not purchasing enough water? And he said probably about three years. So the $8.5 million over a five-year period is, is accurate. I also want to point out that a lot of the money for that $5 million purchase came from commercial developers in East Palo Alto. So now we're looking at water for affordable housing and a school. And I think we all know that developers of affordable housing don't have a lot of extra money to pay for things like water. So who's going to benefit from the affordable housing? We in Palo Alto and others in, in the surrounding community. So East Palo Alto's done a lot for us, providing housing for people who work here, putting up with traffic coming into Palo Alto from the East Bay to meet our 3 to 1 jobs housing imbalance. And I think it's just the just thing to do to help out. One last thing I'll mention is that the groundwater underneath East Palo Alto is high in manganese, which is not something that we would drink on a regular basis, better for an emergency supply than a constant additive to the water. So I hope you'll do the right thing and, and approve this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Rita Varell, followed by another former mayor, Pat Burt.
So I usually am very suspicious about anything that is given free because nothing in life really is free. There's always a cost for everything. But I think what I heard Mr. Keen say was that we are transferring the right to East Palo Alto to buy water that we are not using. We are not paying, am I correct? Okay. We are not paying for that water. We are not giving water to East Palo Alto that we have paid for. So it seems like perhaps there is something that can be given for free. This may be the only case. I want it noted. I respect Peter Drekmeier very, very much and I support what he has said. I think that East Palo Alto can use their groundwater, but if they pump out groundwater, that is going to impact all of us. Groundwater, as you know, is dear to my heart and we must keep it in the ground. So if there's an alternative way to provide East Palo Alto with good quality drinking water and not have them have to pump, then that is desirable. The other thing is that Peter mentioned below-market and moderate-rate housing. And if East Palo Alto can build that, it will definitely benefit the whole Bay Area. So thank you.
Thank you. Former Mayor Pat Burt, welcome.
Good evening. So first, I'd like to echo many of the comments that Peter Drekmeier already made. And then I'd like to thank staff for clarifying and correcting, frankly, false statements that Councilmember Tanaka had made about the conditions of the sale of the water that Mountain View has done and the transfer of that water, as well as misrepresentations and a false equivalency that basically was made there. As was stated, this condition exists because over 30 years ago, as East Palo Alto was just being formed as a city, these allocations were made. Palo Alto, with a little over twice the population, received 17 million gallons a day in allocation, of which we use approximately 10 million today, only 8 million in the drought. East Palo Alto received 2 million gallons a day. What Councilmember Tanaka would have us do in trying to actually make a profit off of the waters, transferring the water that we don't use, East Palo Alto currently pays SFPUC the same amount per gallon we do. So under that scenario, we would be asking less affluent East Palo Alto to subsidize our water rates in Palo Alto and taking the unfairness of the original allocation and salt in the wound to, on an ongoing basis, have them subsidize our rates. So one other thing that Councilmember Tanaka asked two weeks ago when he put these inflammatory comments in the press was what kind of city would do this? And I'd asked, okay, good question. What kind of city would do what we're proposing to our neighbors? And East Palo Alto is our most intimate neighbor that already houses a great portion of not only our service workers, but even our city employees with affordable housing that we cannot provide. So if we, you have a neighbor who has a big apple tree and they produce twice as many apples as they can possibly consume, and what do they do? They, they say, well, I'd rather let them rot than give them to you next door. Or no, I've got an idea, I'm going to come over and I'm going to offer to sell them to my next-door neighbor. Well, aside from the lack of generosity of that, think about what happens in a neighborhood over time when you, when you support that neighbor's child or an emergency occurs or frankly, you got more oranges than you need and you share them with that neighbor. That's a longer-term and broader view of what it means to be a neighbor to our sister city in East Palo Alto. So I have confidence that the balance of the council is going to see that this is the right thing to do, the just thing to do, the fair thing to do, and doesn't cost us a dime. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I might mention that the colleague's memo that we are discussing tonight actually has former Mayor Pat Burt's name on it. So it's been a while since we have addressed this issue. Carol Lamont, welcome.
Hello, mayor, members of the council. I'm speaking tonight not only as a long-term resident homeowner in Palo Alto, but as someone who's spent many, many years in East Palo Alto. I worked as a HUD community builder and led the federal regional council's East Palo Alto Task Force. I was a grant maker with the San Francisco Foundation focused on solutions to poverty and housing needs. And I've actually worked for the city of East Palo Alto as well, addressing again housing needs. I want to point out the imbalance between our communities and it's been a long-lasting thing. When I first came to work in East Palo Alto as a community builder under Bill Clinton, residents wanted to give me a tour of the community. And the first place they took me to was the golf course, Palo Alto's golf course, Palo Alto's airport. I said, look, I'm working in East Palo Alto for HUD, why are you taking me here? They said, this used to be our land. Before East Palo Alto was incorporated, it was part of unincorporated San Mateo County. And Palo Alto came in and actually moved the creek to give the land where the Palo Alto Airport is, the golf course, to make it part of Palo Alto. Without those resources, East Palo Alto had less land, less opportunity to develop. So what you're doing tonight is maybe giving back a little of what was taken away from this community from before it was incorporated. I have great respect for East Palo Alto and what it's trying to do to meet its housing needs. And I just hope that our city would do more to meet housing needs here. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I have three to speak. Court Skinner, Stephanie Munoz, and Regina Wallace Jones. Greetings.
Hello. I'm Court Skinner. I'm from East Palo Alto also. I'm on the planning commission, have been on the planning commission for some time, listening to reasons for not starting projects over the years, many, many of which have to do with the lack of water. And I've also been on the O'Connor Track Water Cooperative Water Board, so I know a little bit about water and manganese, and we suffer from that also. It's been really heartening listening to the comments from the other people explaining how we can all be good neighbors. And that's certainly something I'd like to see more of. I don't think, I think Palo Alto's always been a good neighbor. But I, I think it, it's now getting to the point where we really all have to be good neighbors in order to make this region work. So I'm ready to continue to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Stephanie Munoz and then Regina Wallace Jones. Stephanie Munoz and then Regina Wallace Jones.
Good evening again, Mayor Niss and council members. Like Carol, I'd like to take you on another little trip down memory lane. And Liz will remember, and I think maybe Karen, there was a council 15, 20 years ago had a number of women on it. And one of them, there was a discussion about the traffic on University Avenue and how difficult it was, and the bus that went from Stanford down to the end of University or down to Bay Road, like it was probably the 281 bus. And one of them, maybe it was, I don't think it was Judy Kleinberg, I think it maybe was Mickey Schneider, said, "But why are we concerned with a bus that starts out of Palo Alto and goes through Palo Alto, again, out of Palo Alto? Why is that our concern?" Well, because you want a world-class hospital, and you'd like the taxes from it, and you'd like the prestige of it. The hospital workers have to live someplace, don't they? And I've been saying and saying and saying for months now, I have been saying, "Do not let Stanford build anymore without housing for the low-income people." And I went to Father Coleman over at St. Francisco Viscous Church in desperation. I said, "Maybe you could talk to the supervisors in Palo Alto." Because, you know, Stanford is not building any housing for the low-income workers. And Father Coleman said, "Well, are they building housing for the high-income workers?" And I said, "Oh, yes. Yes, indeed, they are." And he said, "Well..." So, you have to have workers in that hospital. My personal feeling is that you should make Stanford house those workers. But if you don't, they have to live someplace. I don't see any place other than East Palo Alto where they can live. Do you? Think about it. And while I appreciate Councilmember Tanaka's thought for the fiscal integrity and his thinking of all those pensions that have to be paid, in this case, I believe it's really to the interest of Palo Alto that East Palo Alto should get this water. It is not against our interest at all. We have a whole community. We need housing for it. Palo Alto is not furnishing it. So, do it with water. We can always save water. Thanks.
Thank you. Last speaker is Regina Wallace Jones.
Good evening and thank you. Am I timed up already? Just very quickly, I am a long-term resident of East Palo Alto. I have lived there for 16 years. I'm also a Stanford alum and a local tech exec. So, I want to make sure that, as we think about this issue, that we're considering some of the practical matters. Yes, I absolutely agree that it is the right thing to do to re-appropriate ratings that are a natural resource. It's not something that's been produced. It's a natural resource, and we obviously have an imbalance across cities. I think for practical matters, we ought to just do the right thing here. I also want to make sure that we appreciate that this is for people and for projects. And I think our mayor spoke this very clearly when he mentioned, "We are paying our fair share in terms of traffic that we are dealing with." I am a mother of two children. It takes me about 35 to 40 minutes just to get out of East Palo Alto every morning to drop my kids off to school every day. And this is a tax that other communities are not paying because they're not in this traffic jam. So, this is definitely something I want you to consider. And further, yes, we are trying to solve problems across the housing spectrum from low-income to not-so-low-income housing, and all of these require projects that need starts that require water. So, my ask is that you sort of consider the practical matter, that it's a natural resource, not necessarily so much focus on providing water to low-income. Yes, that is an issue, and it is also an issue that we have other starts that we need to create. And all of this together is East Palo Alto, and all of it requires a good neighbor to reappropriate a natural resource. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, all of you, for coming tonight. And I know you did come from East Palo Alto. Just to let you know, those of you who are sitting waiting for the agenda item that I'm pretty sure is on airplane noise, we have one other item to get to before that, I believe, and that should be relatively short. So, we have now heard from the public on this coming back to us. And the first person with their light on is Eric Philseth.
Move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, the staff recommendation has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by several people at this end. Whomever got to it first, Beth, they can speak to their second. So, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just briefly. So, thank you for the staff for your clear explanation of this. You know, in some technical sense, you can probably use black shoals to value the water option, okay? But, you know, in fact, these allocations are a historical artifact, and for us to leverage that to make a profit trying to broker a water deal between San Francisco and East Palo Alto, it's a business model that, you know, I personally can't support. In fact, I find it offensive. We got other ways to make money. So, Mayor Abrika, guys do the same thing for us. A lot of people here waiting to talk about other kinds of things. This one's a no-brainer. Let's pass it and get on with our other business.
Okay, so, in speaking to the motion now in this order, I see Lydia first and then Tom. Lydia, are you next to speak to the water? Excuse me. Councilmember, fine, you did second it.
I'm going to give it to Councilmember DuBois, since he was one of their memo writers.
Okay. Handing the honor off?
That's it.
He hands the honor off to you.
Thank you. So, this has been a long time coming. I think we started this in, it was December 2016. So, I'm happy it's here tonight, and I'm glad to see representatives from East Palo Alto and Basca and on all the public speakers, too. And I want to thank the city manager for pulling this off consent, so he got a chance to kind of go over it, since it's been a while. And I do think there was a little bit of misinformation in the press that we should address. So, I just want to say, water is one of the areas I've tried to focus on when I've been on council. I'm currently the vice chair of the Water Recycling Committee between the Santa Clara Water District and the Palo Alto Wastewater Plant. And I think most of the public speakers made a lot of the points I wanted to make, that EPA has, East Palo Alto has a very small water allocation, that it's a historical inequity. And if you look at the chart, Stanford has a bigger water allocation than the City of East Palo Alto, which just doesn't make sense. And, you know, the suggestion that Mountain View is making money, again, we talked about this a couple of years ago, it's, Mountain View takes water from both Hetch-Echi and the Santa Clara Water District, and so they actually have to pay to reserve their allocation, and they're just transferring the obligation to East Palo Alto. We don't have to pay for our allocation. We have quite a large allocation. And I wanted to have proponents of this. If I thought we needed the water, even in severe drought, we haven't come close. And when you look at the benefits of this, I think the number one is really social equity and being a good neighbor and doing the right thing. You know, we're working with East Palo Alto on increasing the use of recycled water, and the more we use recycled water, the less potable water we all need to use. So, we're creating some more connections, and it's basically, it's their water. They're a member of the wastewater plant, so it's their recycled water. So, there were a couple of other points that maybe weren't underlined, some of the other positives. You know, the alternative for East Palo Alto is to pump more groundwater, and we've had a lot of residents talk to us about what happens when you pump a lot of groundwater. You know, with seawater rise, there's a real potential issue of saltwater intrusion, and, you know, with a lot of pumping, that could impact Palo Alto itself. And so, if council members don't think we should be good neighbors, you could also vote for this, just as it's the right thing to do, to help protect the groundwater. And then, on the billing side, most of our water bill increases are being driven by infrastructure costs. It's not driven by the cost of water, and the Hetch-Echi improvements are there. It's not tied to how much water rights we have for water that we're not using. So, when this first came up, when you look at the Basca allocations, there are several cities that have excessive allocations that aren't using it. I think we also have an opportunity to set a precedent here by Palo Alto transferring this water. I think other cities that are sitting on top of these historic allocations potentially could do the same thing. So, and I guess the last point I just wanted to make is, with these allocations, there's 184 million gallon a day allocations. Only 126 million gallons were used, so I'm not even sure the water right has any value because it's not being, the demand is not outstripping those rights that are available. So, I think it just boils down to a question about doing the right thing as a good neighbor. So, I hope all of my colleagues support that, and thanks for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And you were one of the authors. The other author made the motion, actually. And I have now to speak. Adrian, Cory, Lydia, did you put your light on? Lydia, and then Greg. Could you try to hold your comments to, as we do with the audience, for three minutes? And then, we could get, we have a number of people who are waiting to hear about airplane noise.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you, Vice Mayor Philseth and Councilmember DuBois for bringing this forward, among others. And I'm going to support this tonight. I think they have hit upon all the relevant points, that this is kind of a historical inecri and artifact, which we can begin to write tonight. There is no cost to Palo Alto, since this is an unused excess allocation. If you checked your email about this, one of our Parks and Rec Commissioners had a really good phrase I liked. "This is like giving the sleeves off of our vest. This is something we're never going to use, and we have the opportunity to pass it to our neighbors and help them with their development, affordable housing goals." I think our situation is quite distinct from Mountain View's, and there is an opportunity for all SFPUC customers to benefit here, so I would encourage us all to support this tonight. Thank you.
Cory?
I also want to recognize Councilmember Donna Rutherford, Councilmember Carlos Romero, and Councilmember Larry Moody from East Palo Alto who are here, along with Mayor Abrika. And in the audience, of course, thank you to former Mayor Pat Burton, former Mayor Peter Dreckmeyer, and at one point, I also saw former Councilmember John Barton. I'd like to thank the four authors of the colleague's memo for drafting this, bringing this forward. A lot of us have been concerned about this, and that colleague's memo really has enabled us to have this conversation, dig into the details, have our staff do that work with the East Palo Alto staff, comparing and contrasting our situation with that in Mountain View, and understanding how our situation is very different and not analogous to Mountain View's, and understand what we can do to be a good neighbor, given the historical inequities that we were basically, we are today the beneficiaries of essentially squatters' rights on something that we clearly don't need, East Palo Alto clearly does need. We don't really have a right to it, except in a very legal sense, and addressing that inequity with no cost to ourselves seems the least we could do. Frankly, I think we should see this as the beginning of addressing some deep historical inequities between our communities. I hope that this is not just a precedent for other cities, but a precedent for how our two communities can continue to work together for mutual benefit.
Thank you, and thank you for adhering to our three-minute rule. Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. So, I just want to say that, you know, I do appreciate Councilmember Tanaka for being cautious, you know, with the fiscal responsibility here, especially, you know, with the direction that we're going in terms of our comp plan and the growth and so forth. So, I do appreciate that. However, I do also appreciate the city manager and staff for bringing this forward and taking it off the consent calendar so that we can have a clear understanding of why we are allotting this water to East Palo Alto, who's also our neighbor, and to help them with their development and their building, et cetera. So, I will be supporting this motion, and also, I do look forward to our working relationship moving forward, especially since we do share many things, airplane noise being one of them. Another one, another one is, I think, Ms. Rebecca mentioned our traffic. Is it Rebecca? Regina, I'm sorry. Mentioned the traffic that she has to go through. We share University Avenue, which is also pretty impacted. So, I hope that we're able to work together in terms of synchronizing our traffic lights so that we will have smoother flow on University Avenue, especially for people who live close by to there. So, thank you, and looking forward to this.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka, and then finally, Councilmember Holman.
So, I think that all the statements about social inequity, unfairness to East Palo Alto water rights is not the root of my concern. I understand that, and I'm not objecting to trying to help East Palo Alto out. I don't think that's not where I'm coming from. I think that the analogy that Pat talked about, about the apple tree, is actually a good analogy, but it's wrong. What's really happening here is there's actually two apple trees. There's a Palo Alto apple tree, and then there's the Mountain View apple tree. The Mountain View apple tree happens to have a higher cost basis, for whatever reason. But what Mountain View did was they sold the rights. They didn't sell the apples. They sold the rights to the apples, to East Palo Alto, for $5 million. And it wasn't, they have a much higher cost basis than we happen to have, but the asset's still worth $5 million. The Palo Alto apple tree, we want to give basically $2.5 million worth of gallons a day to East Palo Alto, the right of that, for $0. So, the crux of my concern is that Mountain View is helping East Palo Alto out, gaining $5 million, which will offset some of their, no, their cost. And for us, we get nothing. I think that, and I realize that options are a really hard concept to understand, but options are worth something. Water rights are worth something. I mean, you've talked to anyone that's in central California and their farms, they'll tell you water rights are worth lots and lots of money. In our case, it's probably worth about $2.5 million. And this isn't, this isn't trying to be, this isn't trying to profit on another city's morals. It's basically what the water rights are worth. And so, for us to consciously give away $2.5 million worth of water rights, to me, is improper, especially when we're raising the rates to our residents. And I saw this in the paper today. It was, it said $160 a year, which is why I was asking staff to see if they could check it. And that's why I wrote a question in, just to verify that. Now, this $5 million that Mountain View got isn't actually, I think only a small portion was actually paid by East Palo Alto from their general fund. Most of it actually came from developers. So, when developers develop property, whether it's here in Palo Alto or in East Palo Alto, developers actually make quite a bit of money. So, one of the big developers there actually are paying, I think, probably half or maybe a little bit more than half of the $5 million. And the rest of it came from donations from Palo Alto residents. So, to me, I look at Mountain View. Mountain View actually has a surplus budget. Palo Alto, we're dipping out the budget stabilization reserve. You know, if Mountain View was destitute, if they were on the ropes and they were running out money and they need that $5 million, I would totally get it. Okay, yep, I get it, we, you know. But it's actually reversed. Mountain View actually is doing better fiscally than we are in terms of their budget, and yet, we give our water rights away. So, the question here isn't, are we trying to be fair or good neighbors to East Palo Alto? I think we want to be good neighbors to East Palo Alto. But at the same time, and I think my fellow councilmember, Councilmember Koo, has shown this graph where we work for the residents of Palo Alto. That's who we work for first, and so we need to hold their interest above others first. And these water rights, where... And these water rights, worth roughly about $2.5 million, is worth something. And for us to give it away at the expense of our own residents, I saw letters from residents who, I think one person said they're 90 years old, and, you know, I can only imagine what a couple hundred dollars a year, what that means to them. I think it's inappropriate. And while I'm incredibly sympathetic to East Palo Alto, and I want to be a good neighbor to East Palo Alto, for us to give a valuable asset away for free, forever, and the case with Mountain View is, I mean, if, like I said, if Mountain View was running out money, I would totally understand that. But they're not. They're doing very well fiscally. So for those, for that reason, I can't support this motion. I think that we need to keep our residents' interests first, beyond those of our neighbors. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I'm the other author on the day, as it's been generally referred to as...
And you are the other author, by the way.
Others. So here I am, speaking as others. So I've always appreciated how Palo Alto and East Palo Alto have worked collaboratively on a range of issues, everything from public safety to traffic issues and such. And as one of the authors of the Colleagues Memo, I support this transfer. I also, I also appreciate, and some of you may not appreciate this comment, but I also appreciate that Councilmember Tanaka raises questions that I think members of the public may well have too. And I support his right and diligence in asking the questions. Whether we agree or not, doesn't matter. I think it's, I think it's good that he raises the questions, so people can understand. And that leads me to my next comments, which are procedural, because I'm a process nerd, as many of you know, and as I've referred to myself. The Colleagues Memo that came before council, that was Councilmember, Vice Mayor Philseth, then Councilmember Philseth, Councilmember DuBois, then mayor, I think it was then mayor, Pat Burton and I, brought forward, asked for the transfer or sale of water to be referred to Policy and Services Committee, or brought forward for a study session for the city council. At the council meeting where that was considered, there was a motion made to refer the item to, the matter, to Finance Committee. None of that happened. None of it happened. Council clearly directed staff, and none of that happened. Also, East Palo Alto created, mitigated negative declaration in, I think it was June 2017, something of that nature. I don't recall, and I don't catch everything. I don't recall councilmembers being advised that that MND was ready and available for review. I could have overlooked it, but I don't remember that happening. On page 12, I think it is, in the, in the agreement, must not be page 12, but it says on, I'll find it in a second, somewhere in the agreement, it says, oh, here it is, it is on page 12 in the staff report, it says, "The council's direction, the city attorney's office prepared the attached agreement. When would the council have directed the city attorney's office to do such? This has not come to the council before." So my concerns are, if we want to bring the public along, if we want the public to understand, heck, I don't even know how we got here, and I'm an elected. Here supposed to represent the public. I don't even know how we got here. I think we've spent an awful lot of time tonight, when most of these issues, if not all of them, could have been addressed at a finance meeting, at a Policy and Services Committee meeting, or at a study session. Again, none of that happened. That doesn't interfere with my support for East Palo Alto. It interferes with my ability to do my job, I think, in a reasonable and responsible manner, and to help inform the public and bring the public along in understanding how we got here, and why we got here, to this point, and to the staff recommendation that's before us tonight. I very much appreciate that staff took this item off of consent and put it in as an agenda item. I think that was the appropriate and right thing to do. You have heard my comments and concerns. The other thing that I just want to put out there is, I asked the question about the Water Conservation Section of East Palo Alto Municipal Code and implementation of the East Palo Alto Urban Water Management Plan. I wish, and so this is, this is, this is good faith. It is good faith, because we have nothing in writing that assures or confirms in any agreement what those documents represent. And by the way, those documents can be changed by East Palo Alto officials. So we really have no assurance. So it is a leap of faith, and it is a trust that our communities will continue to work collaboratively together, that there will be housing constructed, that hopefully there will, especially affordable housing, as we're trying to do. Hopefully there will be retail and income-producing development for East Palo Alto, and to assist in your economic program there. I have a comment about, as I do here, about office development, because I don't know how many East Palo Alto persons will be employed in, depending on what kind of office development is. So I'm, I'm again trusting in your wisdom and judgment in how you execute utilization of the water. So those are my, those are my comments in support of the transfer, and I hope that going forward, these kinds of situations don't proliferate, and actually hopefully cease, so that we can actually have a good process, it's a public process, and that follows council direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and, but clearly, the reason that we took this off consent tonight was for exactly that reason, Councilmember Holman, is that it needed to be aired in public. Jim and I discussed it extensively, and it was his idea to pull it off, and I think that was, that was a good one. First of all, thanks to all of Palo, all of East Palo Alto, who came, both your governance and your residents. I really appreciate, I see you here, Larry Moody. One of the things that I really believe in is regional cooperation, and I serve on one of the, one of the regional boards with Larry. Larry, just stand up for a minute, because this is a former mayor from East Palo Alto, very involved in the region, and very committed to his community, so thanks, Larry, for coming tonight. But we frequently, through the years, have discussed how to cooperate. I was on the council once before, as many of you know, and we began then cooperating with East Palo Alto with something that was then called the Red Team, way back when. Some of you might remember that. It was an attempt to make, at that point, East Palo Alto a safer place to be. It worked well. We then worked later with East Palo Alto on their developing the ability to be economically sustainable. You became a city in the early 80s, am I right? 83. So it is tough for a city to sustain itself economically. And their goal was, they became a far safer city to live in, then they became economically viable. And the one thing that's really held them up is water. And that's why this was begun. And Pat, I think you first mentioned this early in your mayorship. And these things sometimes get lost along the way, other things come up, but this was, this was really a major accomplishment, I think. A safer city, an economically sustainable city, and now one that has sufficient water. As you know, I'm particularly interested in your being able to continue with the affordable housing, and I know there is an affordable housing project on the books right now. So I am delighted to support this tonight. I'm sorry it took us so long. I agree, it could have used an airing in different of our committees. It didn't happen, and that's why it's happened tonight. And thank you to all of you who are here for airplane noise. But I realize that, as Regina mentioned, airplane noise affects everybody. So that, that is, we share the skies, as well as sharing our water. So I think that takes us to a good place tonight, and I think at this point, we can actually vote. So, would the eight of us who are here tonight vote on the board? And that passes on a seven to one with Councilmember Tanaka voting no. Okay, I also want to thank Donna Rutherford and Carlos Romero, who are here as well. I'm sorry I didn't see you in the audience, or I certainly would have called you out previously. Thanks very much for being here. So with that, we're going to go on from one challenging issue to the next, which is...
First five-minute break.
Yeah, hang on a second. So what we're going to do next, as you know, is talk about airplane noise. We have staff here to do that.
CDBG.
Oh, I take it back. We still need to do CDBG. Before we take our break, Karen, let's, let's do the CDBG, and then...
I wanted us to be able to congratulate our partners and neighbors.
Got it. Okay. Apologies, I didn't know what your intention was. Do you want to take the five-minute break?
Well, I did.
She wants to do it right now, before it's too late. Just let her take the five-minute break.
Let's move on. Go ahead and do it. Yeah, we'll do CDBG. Yeah. Let's just get CDBG, and then we'll break.
We're hard in 15 minutes.
Yeah, we are. So, so if sufficient, if enough of you will stay, we can vote on CDBG and have CDBG done.
There are staff presentations.
Yes. Do you, do you have a CDBG staff presentation? Yes. So, don't hesitate to use your fast-talking voice. So our next item is a public hearing on CDBG, which we will do quickly, and then we will actually move on to our, our highlight of the night. So with that, staff, would you present?
Great, thank you.
We still have a quorum up here.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Jonathan Leit, the Assistant Director for the Planning and Community and Environment Department. We're, I'm joined by Erin McCall, our staff specialist, to present the CDBG annual audit. This is an evergreen report that we produce, you see it every year. At the time that this report was prepared, we didn't have all of our funding information known, but since this has been published, we did get some information that does tell us that we are going to have more funding available than we had anticipated. The, the Human Relations Commission proposed a contingency plan on how to address additional funding, and that was supported by the Finance Committee, and we're here to represent that, we're implementing that contingency plan for the additional funds that are available. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody in the public who is still here to support Erin McCall and her debut presentation before the city council.
Good evening, Mayor Ness and council. I'm here tonight to give you a brief overview of the fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG allocation process. The city of Palo Alto receives annual funding from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as an entitlement city under the CDBG program, which is a principal federal program that provides grants to improve physical, economic, and social conditions, primarily for persons of low and moderate income.
Wow. That speaks to the future.
So the recommendations that are in the staff report are based on estimates. Since there was a bit of uncertainty with the federal budget process, staff provided a conservative estimate for the CDBG grant. For budgeting purposes, city staff estimated the city's HUD entitlement grant based on a 10% reduction in funds from, from the previous year. The total funding estimated for fiscal year 2018-19 was $5,782,960, which consisted of the estimated entitlement grant of $3,926,780, estimated program income of $1,360,490, and $4,956,900 in prior-year resources. So HUD notified the city of its fiscal year 1819 CDBG entitlement just this past Wednesday. The final CDBG entitlement amount is $4,848,160. So the actual amount available for allocation now is $6,704,340, which is $92,000 higher than the estimate in the report. The plan in the case of funding increase recommended by the HRC and Finance Committee for the public service category is to distribute the additional available amount in the public service cap until an applicant is fully funded. And if an applicant reaches the funding amount requested, any remaining fund will be distributed to other applicants. For the planning and administration category, Project Sentinel was recommended to receive an additional amount up to the total amount requested, while the remaining amount will go to the city administration. For the remaining two categories, it was recommended to maintain funding levels for downtown streets and allocate additional funds to minor home repair program. So according to federal regulations, public services have a maximum spending cap of 15%. Therefore, the maximum that can be allocated per estimation was $87,780. However, it has now increased to $1,008,900. The five agencies under the public service category currently funded by the city are listed on the slide. Catholic Charities, YWCN, and Salivcon Valley Independent Living Center were already allocated the full amount requested. Therefore, the additional amount is distributed equally between Palo Alto Housing Corp. and Life Move. Similarly, planning and administration, which includes administrative costs associated with managing the CDBG program, has a 20% spending cap. The maximum that can be allocated per estimations was $1,057,405, which has now increased to $1,241,730. Project Sentinel and the city of Palo Alto administration are currently funded through the CDBG grant under this category. Per the contingency plan recommendation for Project Sentinel, the staff have allocated the full funding amount requested. The remaining amount after fully funding Project Sentinel was $90,447,500. The staff allocated the requested amount of $85,000 to admin program, and the remaining $5,000 is allocated to the minor home repair program. Yeah. Okay, so there's, sorry. Okay, so there's no cap placed on the economic development and the housing rehab program, and we are providing around the additional $65,000 to minor home repair program. In terms of the funding recommendations you have before, these have been reviewed by the HRC Selection Committee, the full HRC, and the Finance Committee. After tonight's meeting, the next step for the staff is to submit the final 1819 action plan to HUD by May 15th. The recommended actions are listed on the slide. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions from here, but we do have two people from the public who wish to speak. One is John Barton, and the other one is Cybelle.
John, I have to go home and ask you to speak.
Okay, so, Cybelle, are you going to speak?
So, we just want to say a big thank you to the Palo Alto City Council for the grants, the CDBG funding. And these funds will cover needed, much-needed exterior paint and new flooring for the Opportunity Center. And we look forward to working with the city of Palo Alto to make the Opportunity Center facility a thriving part of the community. It already is a definite part of the community, but I think it can become even stronger and show the, show the cooperation that the city of Palo Alto wants to give to those who are less fortunate. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and that is all that we have from the public, and I have lights from Philseth, Holman, and DuBois.
Can we make a motion, Karen?
Oh, go ahead.
Move the staff recommendation.
So motion and a second. Let me turn out all the lights, and who wants to speak to the motion? Tom, to the motion?
Can I speak first?
Oh, yes, of course, sorry.
Just real briefly, I mean, it's a relatively modest amount of money overall. We looked at it in staff, or we, I'm sorry, we looked at it in Finance Committee, thought it made sense, so...
Lydia.
Same as what Councilmember Philseth said, oh, Vice Mayor Philseth.
And council, it's Tom, and then Lydia, or, I mean, Tom, and then Karen.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand this.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. So the actual money came in higher than anticipated, and in the presentation where you show the contingency plan recommendation, that's the recommendation because we have more funds?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm curious about a couple of things. Curious, with the extra funds, why didn't we meet the entire request from the Downtown Streets team? Why did we cut that back?
So it was recommended by the Finance Committee and HRC that we are already funding them a lot, so if... And for the... For Economic Development and Housing Rehab, there is no spending cap. So the committee would like to give more to the Minor Home Repair Program. That's why we gave the additional $65,000 to the Minor Home Repair Program and kept the allocated amount for Downtown Street as it is.
Okay, but the... I guess the funding priorities on slide... Whatever, that is slide three? It seems like we prioritize public service... I mean, are these in order of priority?
Can you go to slide, please?
Or is this just a description?
Slide five, three.
Yeah, this slide here.
Uh-huh.
I guess when I read it, I thought it was in priority order. Maybe that's not the case, that if we have additional funds, public services would get funded until it's fully funded.
This is not the priority setting.
Okay, but again, it says public services would be funded until fully funded, and again, I think the Downtown Streets team has been particularly effective use of money, so I just wondered why we were holding $5,000 back when we had more money.
So we... So the committee was actually more interested in giving more to the Minor Home Repair Program. I mean, it's not a big deal, we can give $5,000. I mean, we can fully fund Downtown Street Team, but we wanted to give more to the Minor Home Repair Program because it's our pilot program, and we think that, you know, it's going to be very successful amongst the residents, so that's why we give the additional $5,000 to the...
Okay, it just doesn't seem to match this. It says basically any... Again, I guess I was reading them in order, but it seemed like at the end, if there was any funds left over, it would go to Minor Home.
Minor Home, yeah.
But it seems like we prioritized it over some other organizations.
So the Public Services and Planning and Administration has a spending cap. We can give them more than the spending cap.
Right.
So that's why we have to give the additional to Minor Home Repair Program, because we just have Downtown Street Team or the Minor Home Repair Program to give the additional funds to.
Right.
We can give more than the spending cap to the other two categories.
So a council member, if I may, so you're right, we... There was a choice to decide where to put that additional money, and if the council wants to put it into the Downtown Streets for the additional $5,000, we can do that.
Okay.
That's within your discussion.
And I'm just curious, what... How has the homeless population changed? Do we have any figures for that?
You know, I was just looking at something recently about that, and I think... Well, I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't have the...
I haven't seen our numbers. I saw mountain views has like tripled in the last four years or something.
Yeah, that's... That's not consistent with my recollection of this data that I was looking at more recently.
That we haven't grown that much?
Not, no.
Okay. I guess the other one that I was curious, again, maybe there wasn't any reasoning, but the Fair Houses Services. I just want to make sure I have my numbers right. Okay, so we're meeting their full request, right? So again, I'm glad to see we ended up with more money than we expected. If my fellow council members would support it, I'd make a friendly amendment that we actually fully fund the Downtown Streets team. I think it's a particularly effective use of our funds, and it gets leveraged quite well, and I would take that from the Minor House Repair.
You need the extra $5,000?
For the $5,000.
For $5,000?
Yeah, I'm not sure why we're like shorting their requests and putting that towards Minor Home Repair. I guess my priorities should just be to fully meet their request.
Does staff have any comment on the $5,000 between these two programs?
No, we're fine either way that the council wants to go.
All accepted as friendly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember DuBois, for doing that. I have a couple... One is, when did this become known? Because we're getting it at places, and we're trying to digest it like right now in real time. When did this become known?
Yeah, so we got the updated information on Wednesday.
It would have been terrific if we could have gotten it before tonight. A council packet went out last Thursday, so we're trying to like do numbers up here right now, so...
So I guess maybe we can address that. We got an extra $92,000 more than we were anticipating, and with that, we're able to fully fund all of the programs, with the exception of the Downtown Streets, which I think now has been accepted as a friendly amendment. So all of the programs, I'm looking at Aram to correct me if I'm wrong, are fully funded.
Yes, for the spending cap, like...
Right, consistent with the spending caps that we are obligated to adhere to.
That's not what I see on... These don't have slide numbers on them, so the next... No. Yeah. They don't have slide numbers on them, but the Public Services slide. So Life Moves, the Opportunity Center, requested $50,000, but we're only funding $44,933.
So this falls within that spending cap that Aram was talking about. There is in this public... In the Planning... Excuse me, in the Public Services category, there's a spending cap. So we're not able to fully fund these programs because we're coming up to this cap through the federal regulation. So with the exception of this Public Services slide, because we can't fund them anymore, we're prohibited from funding them anymore than they're already funded, the rest of the other programs are fully funded.
We're prohibited from funding to that level?
Yes.
Were the applicants aware of that when they applied?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we have public hearings and mandatory meetings that they have to attend, so they understand the limitations and the caps.
Okay, and the... Where is it? The Minor Home Repair Program, there was only one applicant. Okay.
That's correct. And that was the second time when we announced the NOFA. The first time, there was no takers.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
So in November 2017, we published a NOFA for the Minor Home Repair Program, and there were no takers, and then we have to talk to some agencies. And then for the second time, when we announced NOFA in January 2018, then there was one applicant.
So NOFA is a Notice of Funding Availability, and we had no takers the first time. When we had this opportunity, we made it available again, and I think through consultation with this group, Aram was able to get them to file, so now we actually do have an applicant.
Okay, and what is staff going to do to promote others to apply?
That's a great question. We were actually having that conversation last week, and then we continued it again this week. And so Aram's going to be working over the next period to identify for our program income that we generate, plus with the, you know, the funding that we received, we do need to identify other applicants to come forward and help us, you know, spend this money that is available to help these special groups. So I don't have an answer for you today, but we do recognize that that's something that we need to address and solve for the next year.
That would be great. And then just one other question, which has to do with Planning and Administration. And if the city staff was going to be able to do this on $73,733, a great number, why are we going back to the $85,000? Because that incremental difference could also go into, you know, the Minor Home Repair Program.
Yeah, again, that's a... Council can decide how to appropriate the money for that. We've... I know that the administration cost does seem high, but it's actually... We're not actually cost-recovering all the staff effort that goes into this program. It actually costs a lot more than this. So to the extent that we're trying to recover some of the costs that we're able to do, that's what we're attempting here. But yes, you could reallocate some of that money back to the Minor Home Repair Program.
Okay, maybe I'll put that forward for consideration for next year. For anybody who doesn't know, the Downtown Streets team also gets money from our other... From our HisRep funding as well, that program as well. So just one last comment. I thank you for bringing this forward. I do wish we'd gotten this earlier so we could digest it and not have this conversation And there was something in the staff report that, while I appreciate the diligence, I also was a little concerned about it. It was on packet page 112, under Resource Impact. It said, "Several measures have been taken to ensure there is no general fund subsidy for the administration of the CDVG program." We just had an item that we just listened to about social equity, and this is one of the two programs we do in Palo Alto to help support these agencies and other agencies, this and HisRep. So frankly, and I won't be here next year to encourage this, but I don't care if we go into the general fund to support these programs. It's important for these agencies to be funded. So I don't know that there's any reason... I've never been told that there's any reason that we can't do it, especially since this says to ensure that there's no general fund subsidy. I presume that means that we could, but we're not going to do that. Yes, Jim?
No, I'm presuming, and I'm just jumping between you and the Planning Department here, and that they're the staff on the CDVG allocation work, and the larger general fund question would be more directed to me as city manager as something that we should be, you know. I appreciate your perspective and your concern on that. You know, is that something that the council or Finance Committee in the council wants us to be taking, you know, into consideration more?
Yeah, I really would appreciate that, and again, I won't be here next year to vote on this, but I was troubled by that comment. Appreciate the diligence, but troubled by the comment, so... Okay, thank you very much. I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you vote on the board? Passes unanimously. Now, my apologies to my colleagues, but I'd like us to keep on going. Those of you who are waiting out here to deal with airplane noise have been very patient. So if we pop up out of our seats on occasion, please bear with us. We may just stretch for a minute. There is a... Behind us, there is a... An ability for us to watch what's going on, so if we, as I said, disappear for five minutes, we haven't gone very far. So this next item, as you know, is dealing with airplane noise, and we have staff here tonight to do a presentation. Many of you already know Michelle Flaherty, who has just taken her seat here in the front row, or the back row, whichever one it looks like. And this went to Policy and Services. There is a very long motion, which is on page 180 of your packet. That's the one that we'll be speaking to. And by way of preamble, I would say that I know this is an issue, especially for those of you who are here tonight, has been really frustrating, a vexing issue to deal with, and one that really has posed a number of problems for us, because this is controlled out of Washington, D.C., and is not local. So could you just put your hands up if you're here for that issue, for the noise issue? Okay, great. So we know we're all on the same page, as we say, and with this... Over here, there's a great placard as well, so...
Palo Alto is not ready to apply.
Right, yeah. So thank you for bringing that. So here is what we're going to do tonight. We will have some comments from Policy and Services Committee. The chairperson is Adrian Fine, and we're going to begin tonight, though, with our staff. Jim, are you going to speak to this, or is primarily Michelle?
No, I think... I think a lot of folks have gotten to know Michelle in her short time here. I would just put a plug in her for, one, how fortunate we were to convince her to come to our city, both with her background in transportation and various levels of government. I think her manner of being able to kind of work through complex issues and be able to communicate really kind of clearly and effectively about them, and so she'll be much better at that than I will, so I'm just here in support of her work here tonight.
Great. Okay, so with that, we have Michelle Flaherty, who is ready to dive into this, after which you will have an opportunity, and I... And have the... All the cards come in yet?
Yes.
On this? Okay, so then after this is... After the presentation is over, you'll see a number of names that will go up on the screen behind me. If you want to speak, please get a card from the clerk, which is over here, and turn that in, and we add it to the list. So with that, Michelle.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm trying to forward. I don't know if the audience has this on hold. I doubt it. Is the arrow key? Forgive me for a moment while we try to correct a technical complication. Okay. Okay. I can't go back now. Okay. We figured it out. Thanks for your patience on a long night. Okay, so where we're starting with the notion of airplane noise is that we've experienced some changes in our community in recent years, and there are a few different things that are contributing to that. The first is that technology is changing how the FAA controls air traffic. And in March of 2015, the FAA implemented what's known as the Next Generation in air traffic control, or what we refer to as Next Gen, and that changed the traffic patterns in the San Francisco Bay Area, coming into the airports in the San Francisco Bay Area. It increased efficiency by taking planes that were flying in a more diffused fashion and focusing them in more narrow-focused trajectories. That seemed like a good idea if you were trying to simplify the airways, but what it did was it focused more flights over the city of Palo Alto. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go forward. The second factor here is that as they implemented Next Gen, federal policy in federal legislation, passed by Congress, prioritized efficient routing of flights. And again, this seemed like a good idea at the time, when Congress was considering the policy. The notion here was we want flights to get to their locations faster for the traveling public. We don't want unnecessary delays. We want to save fuel. We also want to burn less fuel in terms of it being good for the economy. So those all sounded like good things to the policymakers who voted in favor of the legislation for more efficient routing of flights. What that means for us when we're dealing with noise, however, is that if we want an airplane to go just a little out of its way, perhaps, to spare a community some noise impacts, one of the things the FAA will respond is, well, that's not the most efficient route. And federal policy dictates that we're supposed to follow the most efficient routes. So this well-intentioned notion of prioritizing efficiency in routes works against us at times when we're trying to find solutions to airplane noise. The third issue impacting us is that air traffic is growing significantly in our region. In the last five years, it's been reported that passenger counts have increased at San Francisco Airport by 25%, at Oakland Airport by nearly a third, and at San Jose Airport by over 50%. I won't go through all of these slides in detail, given the hour, but these give you some idea of the recent and anticipated growth at all three airports in our... some idea of the recent and anticipated growth at all three airports in our region. The light green bars are the projected traffic in the future, and the dark green bars show the increase in recent years. There was a decrease right after 9/11 in air travel, and you can see that after that decrease, there's been steady growth, both in air passenger flights and in air cargo flights. We're seeing huge increases in air cargo for a number of reasons, the growing economy, as well as the movement of goods because of online retailing and other dynamics, including at Mineta Airport, where we see both passenger and cargo increases occurring and anticipated to increase significantly. So the noise we're hearing today is probably going to increase further. The sum of all of this is that the Bay Area air traffic is very, very crowded. Here in Palo Alto, as you know, I just joined the city a handful of months ago, and when I first started learning about airplane noise in Palo Alto, I thought I might be working on an issue that affects, you know, any community with airports nearby, and the more I learned about it, the more I realized that Palo Alto is in a uniquely poorly structured situation in the Bay Area. So I'd like to just quickly summarize why the problem is significant in Palo Alto. We have near the city of Palo Alto something called the Menlo Waypoint, which is one of the places that airplanes move through on their way in to arrive to San Francisco Airport. And about 53 to 60% of the arrivals coming into San Francisco Airport fly over or near the city of Palo Alto. So I'd like to quickly summarize for you where all of the arrivals into San Francisco are coming from. Forty percent of them are coming from the east on what's called the Diamond Route, and they actually named it that after the notion of a diamond lane, because there are, the FAA is conscious of the fact that this is the most heavily used route coming into San Francisco Airport at 40%. So they have a lot of flights coming in, and this is bringing in the flights from the east, so anything coming out of New York, Chicago, Washington, Denver, they're all coming, Washington DC, Denver, they're all coming from the east along the Diamond Route. So that's 40%, and it is indeed the highest single traffic route. However, the other three all come over Palo Alto. So let me begin with the Surfer Route, which brings in all flights from the south, and 30% of San Francisco arrivals are coming from the south along the Surfer Route. It's the orange line you see at the bottom of the map here. It continues up, it's covered by this green, but if the green weren't covering it, you would see the orange line continuing up through the Menlo Waypoint here, and continuing up into San Francisco Arrival this way. So it continues through and over Palo Alto right here. So 30% of the flights are coming over Palo Alto through the Surfer Route. Another 5% are coming from the west on the Oceanic Route over the Pacific. And while 5% sounds like it's probably not a heavy impact, the trouble with, one of the troubles with the Oceanic Route is that these flights that are coming in from the west and over Palo Alto, because they're coming in from overseas, are typically coming in at difficult hours. So of that 5% that are coming in, I would say a third of them are arriving between 4:30 and 6:30 AM. So they're coming in in the early morning hours over our residents of Palo Alto before making the turn and heading into SFO. Then from the north, we have the Bodega Arrival Route. These are all the flights that are coming in from the north, and they will do one of two things. They will either veer off and take what we call the Bodega East Leg, which is over the bay, which we think is a great idea. Or they may come down and continue on what we call the Bodega West Leg, which comes down the peninsula, hangs a U-turn over Palo Alto, and through the, through up and into the bay and into the final approach to SFO. What we have found, 25% of the arrivals into San Francisco come in on Bodega, and of those, 70% are coming in on the West Leg, and only 30% are coming in on the East Leg. In our conversations with the FAA, we have asked them repeatedly to try to route more and more flights off the West Leg and onto the East Leg, take them off the peninsula and move them over the bay. The trouble with that, that the FAA has explained, is they've got to filter these in with the flights that are coming in from the Diamond Route, and the Diamond Route is so congested that they aren't able to do this as often as we would like them to. Hence, 70% using the Western Leg and only 30% using the Eastern Leg. What this means in terms, I've been telling you what it means in terms of percentages, what this means in terms of frequency, is that we've got, on average, about 315 planes flying over or near Palo Alto on a typical day. So the hard numbers here are, the Diamond Flight, the Diamond Route is bringing in an average of about 242 flights, the Surfer, 181 flights, Oceanic, 30 flights, and Bodega, 151, of which 105 are coming on the Bodega West, 45 approximately on East. Those are averages taken from December 2017 statistics. When we look at complaints being registered at the San Francisco Airport Noise Office, we find that Palo Alto is home to more noise reporters than any other community in the Bay Area. In the map on the left of the screen, you can see a dot for every location where noise reports are coming into the San Francisco Airport, and you can clearly see the Surfer Route's impact, coming in from the south, up toward Palo Alto before they head out over the bay. What you see on the right of your screen is the cities that belong to the SFO Roundtable, which is the body that works with the airport on airplane noise, and these are the San Mateo County cities that were formed as part of the Roundtable originally, and you can see there in double digits of complaint, noise complaints. Then you come over to the cities that are not members of the Roundtable, and you will find triple-digit complaints from communities like Los Altos, Los Gatos, Santa Cruz, and here Palo Alto, where we have over 200 complaints during the month of December 2017, as an example. And let me clarify, these are not individual complaints, these are complainants. In other words, these are not reports, these are reporters. So it's not like one person called 100 times and it counted for 100. If one person called 100 times, it counted as one, for that one person. So this is those folks who are being impacted, not the number of complaints. In terms of San Jose, Mineta International Airport, the good news is, it's usually not impacting Palo Alto very intensely. I know these maps are a little bit complicated, there, it's the same map to the left and the right. To simplify things, let's just look at the map on the right. You can see the city of Mountain View is outlined in purple, and to give you an idea that Palo Alto is just to the north of the city of Mountain View, so just above the purple is where Palo Alto is located. And under normal circumstances, most arrivals coming into San Jose come in from the east, make a U-turn and then land, and so Palo Alto enjoys no significant impact there. However, 15% of the time, the weather circumstances are such that the city of San Jose uses what's called the South Flow Arrival, and what occurs then is that the arrivals are coming in from the west and making their U-turn. And again, just looking at the map on the right for simplification, you can see to the north of the purple boundary of the city of Mountain View, to the north of that is Palo Alto. The legend on this map will show you, excuse me, that as the lines move from blue to green, that is designating that they're moving from between 3,000 and 4,000 feet to between 2,000 and 3,000 feet in altitude. So they're decreasing considerably in altitude just as they're making the turn over Palo Alto. So when San Jose Airport is in its South Flow at 50% of the time, 15% of the time, Palo Alto is getting the lowest flights as they're on the turn. And this continues to be an issue. San Jose just recently released some data from as recently as a week ago, and on May 1st, you can see where the flights are turning. They're trying to turn in as tightly as possible, which is a good thing for Palo Alto, in that they are turning more over the Moffett Field area, but they do still reach up to the north. So what are we doing about all of this in the city of Palo Alto? Since the last time we presented to the council, which was in June 2017 on this topic, council gave us direction to reach out to our neighboring communities, and we have done so. We have partnered with our neighboring communities in a number of ways, including partnering with the cities of East Palo Alto and Menlo Park in crafting complimentary letters to the FAA last fall, and recently partnering with the cities of Los Altos and the city of Mountain View on a joint letter that went out as recently as last week, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. So we have been reaching out to our neighboring communities and taking a regional approach to this. We've also researched noise monitoring options, and the San Francisco Airport has indicated that if we approached them about noise monitoring, they would likely be willing to provide us with temporary noise monitoring for a period of time. We also might have opportunities to partner with neighboring jurisdictions if we wanted to do something more permanent in terms of noise monitoring. We've sent letters to the FAA in response to their reports on what they're doing on noise in this area, every time a report has come out, in July, in November, and they have recently released a new report in April, and one of the things council might like to do is provide direction to staff to provide a response to that one as well. We've conducted an analysis of these reports, which I'll be summarizing for you tonight. We brought this information to the Policy and Services Committee, which is bringing you recommendations tonight, which I'll summarize at the end of this slide presentation. In March, members of the city council flew to Washington DC and met at FAA headquarters with members of the FAA to talk about the impact of airplane noise on the city of Palo Alto, and most recently, we sent another letter to the city, to the FAA, in, as I mentioned, in conjunction with our, two of our neighboring cities. So now what I'd like to do is provide you with a brief summary of a rather thorough report from the FAA. The one that came out in November was well over 100 pages long. In April, they provided an update that was just about six pages long, and that's included in your packets. And I apologize for the late arrival of the information. I can imagine how frustrating it is to try to process all of this information in an app place's memo. It was just released about a week and a half ago by the FAA, and we wanted to do some thorough analysis of it before bringing you a summary. So thank you for your patience with the late-breaking information on the April report. On the screen, you see the seven major positions that the city of Palo Alto has taken in its previous letters to the FAA, and I'd like to just give you a brief report on the FAA's response to these positions. All of these positions that the city of Palo Alto took were in support of broader positions or more detailed positions taken by either the San Francisco Roundtable or the Select Committee, and so none of these were unique positions that were crafted by the city of Palo Alto on its own. These were all articulated by the city of Palo Alto in support of positions articulated by those regional bodies, which are what the FAA was responding to in its reports. So in response to this proposal to reduce congestion at the Menlo Waypoint, which again is the waypoint that most of the flights are routed through, impacting the city of Palo Alto, in response to that request, the FAA declared it could not endorse that position. And the reason it explained it will not endorse that position is because if it moves the traffic away from the Menlo Waypoint, it will, moving it into San Francisco, it will run into either the San Jose airspace or the Oakland airspace, and that the only place to move the traffic into SFO is through the Menlo Waypoint. So the FAA could not agree that reducing congestion there was feasible. We were very disappointed with that response. In response to Item B, relocating flights to the east, one of the things we had proposed was if you can't, well, first, we'd like to see more flights come in through the Diamond Lane, rather than 60%, 53 to 60% coming in through the Menlo Waypoint. So increasing from 40% to more than 40% coming in through the Diamond Lane. The FAA responded that the Diamond Lane is highly congested and really can't take much more in the way of flights being routed through it. We also suggested using some other space to the east, over the mountains where you would not impact a lot of residential communities, and perhaps come in over some kind of a highway corridor where it's already noisy, and see if there's some way to really minimize impact. And the FAA responded that doing anything south of the Diamond Lane would run into the San Jose airspace, which is prohibited for SFO arrivals. So the Diamond Lane is squeezing flights in between the Oakland airspace and the San Jose airspace, and there really aren't any other routes besides the Diamond Lane to use anywhere to the east of Menlo, is essentially, I'm oversimplifying it, but it was essentially the response from the FAA. So they declared they could not endorse relocating any flights to the east either. Again, we were highly disappointed with this response. Our third position was, let's fly at higher altitudes, coming in over the peninsula and approaching the Menlo Waypoint. If you've got to come over our communities, at least do it at a higher level. And Congresswoman Eschew has been extremely supportive of this position in the past and has advocated with the FAA in the past to try to keep flights at higher altitudes over the peninsula. Unfortunately, in the report, again, the FAA declared it could not endorse flying at higher altitudes coming in over the peninsula. The explanation the FAA provides in its report here is essentially that, and I'm going to oversimplify this in the interest of time, in order for the flights to get down low enough to come into final approach for SFO, they have to start a descent on their way to SFO. And if they were higher over the peninsula, they'd have to fly around more in order to get low enough, and as they were flying around more, they'd run into the San Jose airspace. It would also be inefficient. So they did not endorse that. We were very disappointed with that response. Our next position was that we should move more flights over the bay, fly less over the peninsula and more over the bay, and the key way to do that is on that Bodega Flight Route that I showed you earlier, moving them from Bodega West to Bodega East. Here, I'm happy to report, we've had a modest win, and I credit the city council for this modest win. When the first of the two reports I'm reporting to you on tonight came out in November, the FAA declared that they've really done most of what they can do with respect to that. They try to use Bodega East when they can, but the Diamond flights are so congested that it's really hard to do much more on Bodega East, but they'll try when they can. And they told us in November, in the November report, the air traffic control policies, the standard operating procedures, already say, try to use it, air traffic controllers, when you can. I was proud to see our council members in Washington DC encouraged the FAA to take another look at that, and to look at whether or not there's a way to strengthen that, and instead of just asking air traffic controllers to do it when you can, to really emphasize how important it is to maximize the use of Bodega East, if at all possible, including at night, when the Diamond flights just aren't as crowded as they are during the peak travel times. The council members of Palo Alto communicated that to the FAA during the first week of March, and at the end of March, the FAA released a new directive to their air traffic controllers, stating that during nighttime, the Bodega East is to be the preferred route, and for the standard operating procedures to be amended to show that. We were informed of that in this new report that just came out about a week and a half ago, from the FAA updating us. So we just found out about it a week ago in this report, but the action was taken by the FAA shortly after Palo Alto met with the FAA. So it seems to me that pleading our case does have its positive results when the council weighs in, so thank you for that. In our next category, we have the proposal for reducing vectoring, and here, the FAA has said, it's feasible to an extent, and we'd like to keep studying it. In the November report, they said they would be studying it, and in the April report, they confirmed they're continuing to study it on the Bodega. And in the April report, they confirmed they're continuing to study it on the Bodega East route. So reduced vectoring involves using spacing to try to minimize the amount of flights that are vectored over the peninsula. And they've confirmed that they're studying the Bodega East route in particular to see if improved spacing can reduce vectoring over the peninsula. So there's some promise there perhaps in the future. Item F is scheduling and sequencing flights in a way that might minimize impacts on our communities. The FAA also declared that that might be feasible in the long term. And by long term, we mean probably 2019 or beyond, as they continue to expand on their use of technology in the next-gen world. The last item is improving metrics. And in the November report from the FAA, the FAA stated that it isn't really the FAA's job to improve the metrics they use in less than until they receive policy direction. And so if Congress were to provide policy direction to the FAA to improve its metrics, then it might do so. Congress recently took up the FAA reauthorization bill. Just week before last, the House of Representatives voted on the FAA reauthorization bill and took up some amendments to consider strengthening or improving metrics that might impact noise considerations. The strongest amendments did not survive and make it into the bill. And as a result of that, our representative in Congress, Congresswoman Anna Eschew, voted against the bill. She was one of only 13 members of Congress to vote against the bill. It still passed, but she gave a very specific floor statement, which is in your packets, communicating that her opposition to the bill was because items like metrics and other measures to address airplane noise were not strong enough in the bill. So where do we go from here? One option is to consider some regional committees and roundtables as methods for communicating with the FAA. On the right side of your slide, you'll see a quote from the November report from the FAA where the FAA explained it does not intend to move forward on certain feasible recommendations, quote, "until issues of congestion, noise shifting, and flying distance have been addressed with the airline stakeholders and the affected communities by the Select Committee or the SFO Roundtable." So the FAA has communicated that unless and until local communities work through regional committees to communicate with the FAA, they're not planning on taking action on some solutions. There are three different roundtables or committees at work. The first is the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee on South Flow Arrivals for the San Jose Airport. This has been convened as a temporary committee. It's planning on concluding its work in the next month or two. Councilmember Koo represents the city of Palo Alto on that committee, and they are finalizing recommendations for minimizing impacts on South Flow arrivals at this time. The second committee is this SFO Roundtable, which I mentioned when we were looking at the slide on airplane noise complaints. It consists of representatives from the city and county of San Francisco, the county of San Mateo, and the cities in San Mateo County. There are no cities from Santa Clara County represented on the SFO Roundtable. In recent months, there was some discussion that the SFO Roundtable might consider inviting the city of Palo Alto or some representatives from Santa Clara County and/or Santa Cruz County to join the SFO Roundtable. However, the Roundtable has not taken any formal action to extend any such invitations. They were discussed, but they were not acted on. The third item is an ad hoc roundtable committee that has been formed by the Cities Association of Santa Clara County. The Cities Association of Santa Clara County has formed this temporary ad hoc roundtable committee to explore the development of a permanent South Bay Roundtable, which would potentially include representatives from Santa Clara and Santa Cruz counties partnering together on airplane noise issues in the South Bay and the coastal communities. The city of Palo Alto is represented by Councilmember Greg Scharf, who is chairing the ad hoc roundtable to determine recommendations for the Cities Association on how something like that might be formed. And those recommendations are still under development. And I believe the Cities Association will be considering them at its June or July meeting. By and large, aviation noise will continue to be a federal issue, and so we need to look at this as a policy issue at the federal level. And our policy partners include the Quiet Skies Caucus in Congress, which is members of Congress who have joined together to work on airplane noise issues from across the country. And again, our representative Congresswoman Anna Eschew is a member of the Quiet Skies Caucus. There's also an advocacy group called NOISE, which stands for the National Association to Ensure a Sound Controlled Environment, which advocates on airplane noise issues for communities across the nation. Palo Alto has been a member of NOISE in the past, and with council's direction, the city could join NOISE again and use that as another vehicle for partnering with others who are lobbying on issues related to mitigating airplane noise impacts. Which brings me to the recommendations from the Policy and Services Committee. The first is to actively participate on available community roundtables, such as the one that may be formed by the Santa Clara County Cities Association in partnership with Santa Clara and Santa Cruz Counties. We may also want to consider how staff support is provided to that effort. The second is to request noise monitoring in Palo Alto from San Francisco Airport. The third is to pursue legislative priorities, including partnering with organizations like NOISE on council positions, including making improvements to San Francisco Airport's Fly Quiet program, asking the FAA to adhere to its agreement to increased altitudes over the peninsula. The third is maximizing the use of the Bodega East arrival whenever possible, including at night. The fourth is collaborating on a regional position for system-wide solutions. The fifth is developing a noise monitoring plan in partnership with other jurisdictions. The sixth is maximizing sequencing and air traffic control technology to minimize community impacts. The next is adoption of improved metrics for airplane noise and related impacts by the FAA. And the last is continuing to advocate for greater community engagement by the FAA as well as SFO and SJC. There have been some additional recommendations related to the Surfer route that staff is not including in its recommendation, and that's due to some technical complications related to this issue. When the Select Committee recommended to move the Surfer ground track to the old Big Sur track, and on this map, you'll see the Surfer track in white and the former Big Sur track in orange to the east, the Select Committee made that recommendation on the condition of nine criteria, which included flying at idle power all the way to the bay and flying at altitudes higher than the original Big Sur track. As the FAA has implemented moving the Surfer track back over toward Big Sur, on March 29th, they began pursuing some of that movement, the higher altitude and idle power were not incorporated as part of those changes. These issues are addressed in the April report from the FAA in that the FAA declares it is continuing to look at an optimized descent on the Surfer track and is continuing to develop that design work. So we are continuing to wait for further information from the FAA on that design work. The FAA also says in the April report that they are committing to meet with a local roundtable, the FAA will meet with a local roundtable within 90 days of finalizing that design work. So if we want to be in those meetings with the FAA about what that descent looks like, we would probably want to be participating in whatever roundtable exists that the FAA would be meeting with. In the meantime, I would also just clarify, if you look at the way these two tracks come in toward the bay, you'll see that they come very close together by the time you reach Palo Alto. So whether the planes are following the track to the west or the track to the east, the city of Palo Alto is impacted either way. Other communities have pointed out that if it moves from one to the other, they may be spared. But the city of Palo Alto is impacted, whether it's on the Big Sur route or the Surfer route. So with that point of clarification, here are the recommendations from the Policy and Services Committee. And my report is finally complete. And I will look to the council for any questions and comments from the community.
Oh, thank you, Michelle. We should call you Assistant City Manager Flaherty, if we're really using your title. I think tonight, because it's certainly moving to a later hour, we will start with hearing from the public and then come back to council. When we come back to council, I'm going to start with Adrian Fine, who is the Chair of Policy and Services. So with that, we have listed 15 people who wish to speak. Probably some of the rest of you will be prompted to speak. Please fill out a card. And when we get to the 20 to 25 number, we'll cut that off because I'm pretty sure that's going to, you'll be repeating some of the people before you. And don't hesitate to say when you get up, I really agree with Rebecca or Karen or whomever. So, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Mark Schell, Levitt 2020 Tasso. I'd like to express my concern about the decision not to pursue legal action related to the recent changes in air traffic procedures and the decision to focus instead on regional solutions. Phoenix is not the only model or law firm. I think the more sophisticated technical claims made in the LA cases are more applicable to our situation, and these should be examined. For example, the FAA's original NorCal APM technical documents were replete with gaps, shortcuts, and a basic failure to do the work required by statute and regulation. The FAA asserted that the new procedures reduce noise as required by statute, but their technical reports were redacted, in the technical reports, they redacted all the math and all the data. They used old tools based on letters of exception, which they failed to provide. They gerrymandered to assert that East Palo Alto and Bellhaven are not relatively low-income communities and that they are not minority communities, all to avoid enhanced reviews. We missed the window to challenge the FAA in 2014. We should not miss this window, but I've only a few minutes, so I'll move on. What does working together with other jurisdictions mean in concrete terms that are really being represented? For example, our congressperson recently forwarded a Select Committee FAA update that commits to raising oceanic arrivals to 8,000 feet over Woodside, and then announces that this last pre-next-gen approach will soon be a next-gen OPD named Pirat. Oceanic-tailored arrivals are last pre-next-gen approach procedures that enable planes to glide all the way to Menlo. Now it will become an OPD. OPDs don't glide in the arrival stage. They're parametric. OPDs are the reason next-gen is so noisy. And it's hard to see how Pirat won't move traffic further south. If it's parametric, has to hit Woodside at 8,000 and Menlo at 4,000, it has to move south. How involved is Palo Alto in this newly announced OPD? Also, I'd like to ask, how involved is Palo Alto in the new landing system that SFO has been working on for the last year and a half? The reason Menlo exists is because of its 60-year-old landing system. SFO itself, not the FAA, is buying a new GPS landing system that could easily eliminate Menlo, but we're not involved. Why?
So a couple of things. Instead of clapping, if you would do this, it keeps us moving along. And I know it feels good to clap, but there's a lot of you that would like to talk, so I think if we just wave, that'll work well. And also, Michelle will jot down your questions so that when we come back to her after you all speak, she'll address those then. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm attending this meeting because on April 9th, the city council decided, after a closed session, not to launch a lawsuit against the FAA. Mayor Niss said after that session, "We have not identified any legal flaws that are anywhere as significant as anything that happened in Phoenix." Then said Palo Alto needs to work together with other jurisdictions to address this issue on a regional basis. Literally, that is what we've been doing for the last three years, and we have no relief from the jet noise. There is no reason to believe that solely using that approach will yield different results. Palo Alto should follow cities like Laguna and Newport Beach, who along with Orange County filed suit challenging the accuracy and efficacy of the FAA's environmental assessment of the Metroplex project, which concluded there would be no significant effects on surrounding communities. Those cities have recently reached a settlement with the FAA. Contrary to concerns that the FAA will not work with Palo Alto if a lawsuit is filed, Newport Beach City Manager Dave Kiff said, "The FAA really did work with us on this, and I think not only were our goals accomplished, but we established a new positive relationship with the FAA that I hope will help us going forward." A lawsuit is warranted, and the only way the FAA will respond to our concerns. Further, on March 29th, the flight path known as Surfer 3 implemented a new waypoint in Palo Alto. According to Ian Greger, Public Affairs Manager for the FAA Pacific Division, Surfer 3 has optimized profile descent, which apparently it doesn't, which they say means the pilot can glide the craft, allowing for quieter descent. As the previous speaker said, that's not true. That has to be inaccurate in what's implemented. There is nothing quiet about Surfer 3. I live directly under that flight path. Jets scream in, use their air brakes all day and night. Palo Alto needs to file an objection within the 60-day period. And I know I'm out of time, so with that, I'll say thank you very much.
Mary Jo Fremant, followed by Karen Porter.
Dear council member, thank you for your continued support and for the great work done by staff. I want to talk about two staff recommendations from the region report from a month or so ago. The first recommendation, which is Item C, page 5, states that the city should advocate for a previous noise agreement for arrivals to fly over Palo Alto at 4,000 feet under an instrument approach. We missed that recommendation on February 13 at the PNS meeting, but we want to correct the record. We disagree. And let me explain why. There are two noise agreements. In 2009, I issued negotiated agreement with the FAA to have SFO arrivals fly at 5,000 feet over Menlo. At the time, they were about 70 daily flights, 7-0. Now we have five times that volume with very different procedures that concern traffic and generate a lot of noise. The second agreement is an agreement between SFO, the airport, and Northern California Air Traffic Control, or so-called TRACON. And they agreed to have the SFO arrival cross Menlo at 5,000 feet under visual and 4,000 feet under instrument conditions. The city was never consulted on this agreement. And beside this agreement contradicts the SECMI recommendations of having Menlo at 5,000 feet. So the net thing is, on the 2009 issue agreement, the FAA is a bad actor. They had agreed. And on the SFO TRACON agreement, the city was not consulted. So you can point out these facts, but don't need to advocate for bad agreements such as the SFO TRACON. The second recommendation that I want to talk about is Item D, page 5, is about Bodega East arrivals over the bay. And the last sentence in the report says that increasing the use of Bodega East is unlikely to happen because it's already used today and will unlikely be a good mitigation solution in the future. That last sentence needs to be removed because it undermines previous city requests and the Select Committee recommendations. The conclusion is incorrect. The FAA claims they can't do anything they can. They do not want to, but they can. So please continue to ask for increasing Bodega East. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Porter, and then Thomas, I hope it's Ryan Fleisch.
I thank the Policy and Services Committee and staff for putting forth these recommendations. Unfortunately, my opinion is that they are baby steps when what is needed is bold action. As an example, the Fly Quiet program is really a PR initiative between SFO and the airlines. As an example, the Fly Quiet program is really a PR initiative between SFO and the airlines. I don't know how that helps Palo Alto. Other people, Mary Jo just pointed out the problem with the increased altitude. Another speaker talked about the problem with the FAA forcing cities to work with other cities in Kum Baya, and then they don't accept any of the recommendations anyway. It's just a long, stalling process. I would, I sent yesterday, I hope you had a chance to see an email I sent that goes into more detail on my specific concerns about the recommendations. I'll just highlight one. Somebody's also mentioned the Surfer Star or Surfer 3 amendment. Peter Kirsch, in his memo about the legal analysis specifically, said that amendment gives the city an opening to file suit against the FAA. I'd like to know what's been done to analyze that option. What information have we gotten from the FAA? I've pointed out, the FAA has given us nothing substantive about that amendment. No mapping, no information about any environmental assessment they did or didn't do. We're entitled to that information, and the city should push for it. Lastly, if I could just mention, correct the record to a certain extent, Ms. Flaherty pointed out that the city did send a letter last November that actually wasn't in response to the FAA's November update. It was sent out a little before the update, and the reason I know this is because I know the origin of that letter, how it came about, and how it was sent to the three cities who collaborated and sent their own letters. But I would add that I think the city should send a forceful written response to the November update, and now the April update. And last month, I sent an email that outlined, I think, innumerable bases for challenging the update. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thomas, is it Ryan Fleisch? Close?
That's close enough, yeah. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Tomrin Fleisch, and I live in Crescent Park, basically pretty close to Menlo Waypoint. And I'm an American senior research scientist, after spending 30 years at Stanford in the Departments of Computer Science and the School of Medicine. Top order bit is, I want to urge you in the strongest possible terms to accept and energetically engage in the staff recommendations regarding aircraft noise. I have four points. It's already been said that the FAA dumped noise on Palo Alto, starting in March of 2015. In my view, they've been lax, if not derelict, in negotiating and coordinating with the communities that are deeply affected, and they've been blowing smoke since then. Palo Alto has not had any effective seat on any of the organizations that have been dealing with the FAA. That has got to change, and Palo Alto has got to take an aggressive approach to get involved in those. Third is, aircraft noise is unavoidably a technical issue. That means some of you are going to have to learn about noise and how to deal with it from a policy point of view. And I would encourage you to focus on coordinating with other experts or community experts to gain that expertise, so you can participate. Finally, policy and advocacy decisions have to be based on real-world data. This has not been forthcoming from the FAA. This has to do with how many planes are flying where, how much noise do they produce and when, and how are things changing with time? Last year, I and a number of colleagues from Stanford and the local community started a program to measure aircraft traffic over the entire Bay Area. We have a station that receives the GPS coordinates, altitudes, and so on. Starting last November, we've tracked every 10 seconds, something like 2,000 aircraft over the Bay Area. And we have been organizing that in ways of displaying what's going on, so that they can inform the kinds of policy decisions that have to be made. We need the city of Palo Alto to support this effort, so that we can go into these meetings with knowledgeable data and well-informed alternatives that we would like to see the FAA pursue. So again, please support this activity. It's extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Yapley, and then Chet Sandberg.
Counsel, thank you for your continued focus on the airplane noise problem, and to staff Michelle Flaherty for your support as well. Today, I'd like to make three asks that build on the staff recommendations that were actually in the written report. Number one, we must put in place a fast-track process by the end of June to include both a monitor and qualify phase and a legal filing phase. This will allow us to comply to the 60 days of FAA change. Molly communicated that there's a 60-day legal filing process in place, but the 60-day window must include monitoring and qualifying to see if a change was permanent, has a negative impact, and if we have legal standing. Technical and legal resources, not just legal resources, are needed. A technical consultant must be hired immediately to monitor specifically changes, for example, the surprise posting of the ILS procedure on the IFP gateway by the FAA in the last few weeks. We need a procedurally rigorous process that is timely and engages the council, so that policy decisions are made along those 60 days. Number two, we must write a letter to the FAA and congressional reps. As was mentioned earlier, we did never respond to the November report, and we need to respond to the April report. The key request is for the city to write the letter. We must be on record with a response. Otherwise, it will be interpreted as an implicit consent, and some conversations previously, I strongly believe Menlo Park and East Palo Alto will join us again. And number three, we must actively lobby our senators regarding the upcoming FAA reauthorization. The language must be strengthened to address the airplane noise. We need legal standing. We need the hook to be able to have the lawsuit. And we need to do more than just update our lobbyists or have our lobbyists update us. We need council to actively follow up with our senators now. Thank you.
Thank you. Chet Sandberg.
Yeah, my name's Chet Sandberg, and I don't know that much about this, but I think that the, reading the 17-page report says the bureaucracy won. And I think we have to plant our flag and say we should go ahead with the lawsuit, just say we're not going to give up on this thing. And I think from the standpoint of Palo Alto, it's my opinion, that the money would be much better spent on this than tearing up Ross and Lewis Rhodes and replacing a good road with something else.
That's a fair brevity. Susan Thompson, followed by Carl Thompson.
This issue has already been addressed, but I want to emphasize, the noise I've noticed since March 29th in my area, I live on Edgewood near the Menlo Waypoint, has been worse. I mean, the planes are coming lower and more frequently, and I just want to make sure that you adhere to the 60-day limit that we have from the March 29th changes that the FAA made. Because if we don't adhere to that 60 days, we aren't going to have any ability to change We have, many of us gone to many committee meetings, there are millions of people, not millions, sounds like Trump. There has been extensive work done on part of many Palauotans affected by the noise, and I have seen no difference at all. And I tell you, my life has been affected beyond belief. And I wanted to quote, quote from Joe Semidion, that was in the Mercury in 2016. Quote, "Since the problems were created by the FAA, that means the FAA can fix them if the political will is there." End quote. I count on the city of Palo Alto to be a leader in taking immediate steps towards stopping the FAA from ruining our lives.
Carl Thompson, and then Jennifer Landisman.
Thank you. As I see it, we have two things the city of Palo Alto and members of the council can do. We can talk, or we can act. It's been three years of talking, at the council meetings, at the select committee, at the FAA, and at SFO. Impact of all this talk? Noise has gotten worse, the planes are flying lower, and the FAA has ignored community input from our area. This isn't a controversial issue. Nobody is outside chanting, "Keep the noise, keep the noise." As far as I can tell, as others have mentioned, we in Palo Alto have a short window of time to act, that is, to file a petition for review. I would urge you to take legal action before it's too late. Help and protect and support the citizens of Palo Alto, the people who elected you to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you to you and to staff for the report. I would like to support Mary Jo Fremont's comment about the abiding by agreements, which the public has had absolutely no input on, and to strike from your recommendations to abide by agreements that have not had extensive public input or environmental review. Instrument flying was done for bad weather, or when things were not very safe, not for permanent use, not going from 70 planes at 4,000 to five times that amount. I would also like to support what my neighbor, Tomrin Fleisch, has mentioned about having real-world data, real data, real-world data, and the need to engage into this regional process in a much different way than we have before. Clearly, everyone is saying, what has happened has not worked before. So there are a little, a few things, you might say this is a federal issue, but there are two things that you can do. One is you have the power to challenge the FAA for inadequate environmental reviews. And the way you do that is by filing a petition to review. And you can have some influence in changing the regional structure. There's a lot of visualizations of what this problem is, and I'm going to share the one that I feel is it. We have conveyor belts, and next-gen, the variables that we experience is the speed of the conveyor belt, and the amount of planes on the conveyor belt, and the noise mess that happens when they're about to land. So, thank you. Please focus on the conveyor belt and the amount of planes that are coming down. Just think about how much more, and we have four next-gen routes going over Palo Alto. So these are, this is serious business.
Thank you. I have no idea why our IT system has gone south, but it has. So if you hold on just a minute, Carrie, until we get, Lucille will be off, and the right slide back on. And apologies to Jennifer.
That was, she wanted us to watch that. That was hers.
Oh.
That was her visual.
I'm sorry. I thought that was just, I'm sorry. Oh dear, I missed the humor in it. I thought we had made a terrible error. So Carrie, do you have anything that exciting?
No, nothing. No. Well, actually, can I just? Yeah. Okay. Hi, city council and mayor. It is your job and duty to right this wrong, and that's why I'm here. My life has been really ruined. I feel like I have health issues, and I've already kind of maybe, you might know that, but I am trying, I have to stay in Palo Alto, but I want to get out of here. But I have to. My parents, you know, I'm very lucky, I inherited a home. It's right under the convergence of three flight paths, and it's impossible. But anyway, I'm here to advocate for you to file a petition for review for the current 10 FAA actions. It is inexcusable that now the Menlo Waypoint, Menlo Park, Willows, is now going to be placed, or is placed right now, side by, over Palo Alto. That is inexcusable. The whole thing is terrible, but I want to go on. So four years ago, I sent you all the link or the video of what happened here four years ago, April 29th, 2014, the original EA for next-gen. Actions taken. Write a letter. Maybe submit the comments to the FAA. Let's talk to Molly Stumpf. She wasn't at that meeting. It probably won't be that bad. Oh, well, no attitudes were even mentioned in the draft, but it's probably going to be okay. Bert Gannon has some really, really strong comments. I hope that you're going to use those for a future lawsuit against the Roundtable. Technically, nothing has changed. I hope you listen to that over and over. Gail Price made some really good comments I want to comment on. She said, "We need to be more aggressive. We need, what is the recourse? What is actually happening here? We are trapped." I hope you can follow up about that. The whole thing about noise shifting, oh, then two years later, select committee, many of us went to 80 hours of meetings, 80 hours here in this council. Did anything happen with that? No, not available to do. We can't do those, not enforceable. I mean, you saw it. The noise shifting was Sammataill County, that was the arrivals into SFO, they have shifted it here. Okay, insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. Thank you.
Thank you. We have John Eaton, Stuart Carl, Robert Finn, and Rita Vorel.
Yes, John Eaton, I live on Gwenda Street. I wanted to thank Michelle for that excellent report. It was very informative for me. I've been involved on the periphery, of course, hearing the planes constantly. I do have the fortune to have lived in the same house for over 35 years, so I'm very aware of the change in the noise, of course, but I believe that those planes have always been coming over Palo Alto. And one of the things I wanted to mention, first of all, I agree with many of the comments here, and I encourage the council to take as much action as you can. One evening, a couple of weeks ago, we were outside for dinner, and you've probably heard this before, but between something like 6:45 and 7:45, there were 15 flights over our dinner table outside, which was very annoying. So I know there's been a change over those years, because, you know, there's definitely a difference in the noise pattern. So again, I want to encourage everyone to do, everyone on the council to do as much as they can. The other thing that I feel is, the next-gen plan that comes in lower is really something that we can focus on. And I believe, as I mentioned, I've been at this house a long time, and I've noticed whenever I land at SFO, I look down and see if I can see my house or somewhere close to it. So I know the planes have been going there, but of course, the elevation has made a huge difference. The second point, which you probably all know also, is whenever you come back to Palo Alto from a vacation, and I had the fortune to have some family in the Monterey area, so it's very quick to get there. When I come back, I notice a huge difference, and a lot of noise in Palo Alto. But I think we should be careful about moving the, talk about moving the surfer path east, because then that will affect other communities, including the Monterey area. Thank you.
Thank you. Stuart Carl, and then Robert Finn. And if you don't mind coming closer to the front, that way you can pop up as soon as somebody is done. Welcome.
Good evening, counsel. I'd like to call back to some issues that were discussed in the previous agenda item. In the previous agenda item, the mayor mentioned that we all share in aircraft noise. That's not really true. I'm in San Francisco two or three days a week, and there's little to close to zero aircraft noise in San Francisco. The other issue I'd like to bring back is the idea of regional cooperation. Palo Alto just showed a great display of regional cooperation with their neighbor in East Palo Alto, but we're not getting any regional cooperation from the city and county of San Francisco on this issue. Conspicuously absent from the list of cities that we are cooperating with is, you know, we saw East Palo Alto, we saw Los Altos Hills, Portola Valley, but these cities, like Palo Alto, do not have any influence with the FAA. The city and county of San Francisco does. I would like to encourage the mayor of Palo Alto to contact the mayor of San Francisco and request some regional cooperation on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Finn. Robert Finn, and then Rita Varell, and our last speaker is Carrie Snyder. Welcome.
Thank you. I have no access to privileged information, but I'm sure that in the back rooms of FAA, we have become a standing joke. They do whatever their fancy pleases and are confident that Palo Alto will respond only with safe deference to their claims of knowing better than we what is good for us. In the interim, all legal recourse vanishes with the legal limits embedded in statutes of limitation that our city ignores. My hope, oh, I'm sorry. I want not to express my hope for a more courageous response to immediate events than the council has till now evinced. Thank you.
So, first, I just wanted to say, I have loved the discussion that was occurring earlier tonight. Everybody was so polite to each other, and everybody got to speak, and it was just like old times, so thank you. I'm not bothered by airplane noise because I lived under the San Jose airplane flight for 10 years, so I probably could take this lady's house. But, you know, there's a lot of people here tonight, and they are really bothered. And I think if you don't do something enormously legal, like file the lawsuit, or the petition, or whatever you have to do, nothing is going to happen. It's only going to get worse. Looking at the slides up here about the anticipated growth in and out of the different airports here, it's astounding. I was up in, at the San Francisco airport, dropping off a friend earlier this week. They're building, they're building more. And with all of the population increase that's going to occur in the San Francisco Bay Area, this, our property values are going to be ruined. And Palo Alto, instead of being the place where everybody wants to live and educate their children, is going to be the place nobody wants to come because it's the noisiest airplane path in California. So, please take dramatic action, and all these people will support you. This man has amazing documentation that he can give you right now, that you can put into your letter and get the thing going. Thank you.
Carrie Snyder.
Well, I think a lot of great things were said tonight, and so I just want to lend my voice of agreement to it. And to say that I bet before the implementation of NextGen, not a lot of work or consideration was given to the millions more people on the ground affected by noise than those in the sky. And I don't know what the trade-off is. You know, I would be willing to pay $15, I'd be willing to pay $50 more for a seat on an airplane to cover the cost of fuel that might be saved relative to the way that lives have been affected. And there is a health, you know, there is a health detriment, obviously, mental, emotional, it's hard to focus. You know, there's no schoolchildren here today who can speak about that, but all of us who live under the flight path can certainly speak to it. And I work from home, and I hear every doggone airplane that goes by. So, I don't think a lot of consideration or study was done to the health impact, and nor do I think that there was a lot of care to the people on the ground who are affected by it. And based on the response that I heard tonight, and thank you for the great update, it doesn't sound like there is any care. And so, you know, if we stick to the status quo, that's what we're going to get, is the status quo. And so, I'm here tonight to urge you to take legal action, because unfortunately, that is the only thing that speaks. And so, we've got to be heard. You've got to take legal action. Thank you.
Thank all of you for speaking. Now, it is Michelle's turn to give you some answers or response, and then I'm going to go to Adrian Fine, who heads the committee that made the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Karen Porter for keeping me honest. If I misspoke about the letter we sent in November, it was in anticipation of the November report from the FAA, not in response to. So, if I said in response to, I spoke inaccurately. We sent the letter in an effort to influence the outcome of the November report. We have not sent a letter since the November report was issued because we wanted to seek direction from the council in terms of what should go in that letter. Staff would be happy to write a letter embodying whatever direction council provides in reaction to the November report, as well as the April report, and any other reports that come forward in the future. The FAA indicated they may be doing them on a quarterly basis, so we may have a frequent tempo of letter writing if we want to respond to each one, but those could be quarterly. Pardon me, the cold medicine is wearing off. In response to the first speaker's questions, how involved is Palo Alto in the OPD, and how involved is Palo Alto in the SFO landing system? Not at all, absolutely not. Those are matters that a federal agency is conducting at the FAA and with the city, with the San Francisco airport, and the city of Palo Alto has no standing with how the San Francisco airport operates. So, we have no involvement in that whatsoever. I suspect that the cities that are participants on the SFO roundtable have some involvement in some of that, but we do not. I didn't really see any other factual questions in my notes. Most of the rest were policy advocacy. Does the council have any questions?
I think there was one thing that I heard, which was the letter from April 29, and whether or not that was a 60-day window to respond.
I would defer to our legal counsel on questions about a 60-day response.
April 29th, what was it? March 29th?
I'm sorry, which, are we referring to a Palo Alto letter? Which, no, no, a letter that we received. Was it March 29?
I think it's the March 29, change to the surfer route.
Okay, so, I, thank you. I think what the speakers were referring to is on March 29, the FAA posted online a number of proposals. So, we did not receive any letter, we did not receive any notice, the FAA did not communicate directly with the city of Palo Alto, but the FAA publicly noticed some information online on March 29. And several of our residents have cited that they are asking whether or not we would file suit about that FAA action that occurred on March 29.
Right, so in each case, you know, we would need to look for an actionable action by FAA, and often, communication does not amount to that. I would point out also to the council and the public that in our legal system, when you file a lawsuit challenging an administrative action of a public agency, of course, you need to identify not only the action itself, and that it is actionable, but then you need to identify a procedural or substantive right, or obligation, or error on the part of the agency. And then what you're challenging is that action. And potentially, if you prevail in a challenge like that, what the court will do as a remedy is to typically to invalidate the action and send it back to the agency for a redo. It will not make a different decision, and it will not address a wider group of issues.
The question was, did you evaluate the March 29? That was the question. I don't, I didn't hear the answer.
It's a published FAA action, and the attorney would have to say that that is in fact an action that.
So, what I'd like to do at this point is, you know, hear from our council, we hear what you're saying. As I mentioned at one other point, we did spend about an hour and a half with an attorney, maybe now a month ago, as I recall, and at that point, he was rather adamant that we did not have a case at this point, but felt that we should continue to look for opportunities. Is that, would you, would you say that reflects it, Molly?
Well, the conversation was complex, and of course, the reason that you receive legal counsel in confidence is so that you can get a frank assessment of the strengths and weaknesses of various courses of action in a way that doesn't prejudice either you or anyone else who might file a legal action in the future. So, that's why we do some of that work in closed session. It's really to protect the city and its citizens in the event folks do then move forward. So, I don't want to disclose too much about it, except to say that I think working with council and understanding the legal scenario, and also the policy issues, then you did report out, you made a decision to disclose that you had decided at that point that legal act, it was not timely for legal action at this time.
So, one other thing, Michelle, that you might mention is, there were several, not several, but at least one, mentioned the Newport suit. I think there were a couple of others in Southern California.
So, maybe I can jump in. I think Michelle's done an amazing job of understanding all the technical issues and doing a lot of talking this evening. So, your special counsel did advise you that, that the folks down at John Wayne Airport have been in litigation with the FAA for some 20 years over that airport. So, this was not a new or discreet lawsuit about NextGen. It's been a coordinated effort on behalf of that community for a very long period of time. And it does feel like a long period of time to our community as well, but then to put that into context, in that Southern California area, they have been working for many, many years, in fact, decades. And what our outside council did describe to us is a scenario there where the FAA did have an option to make a different decision on a flight track that actually put noise over an unpopulated area. So, that was quite a distinction from the challenge that we face in the Bay Area, where there are, population centers most places, or perhaps all places where FAA is considering.
And the complexity of the three airports being so close together, that the diamond essentially is threading right through the gap in order to, in order to land. So, with that, I think Michelle has addressed the questions, and I know how frustrated you all are, but it is our opportunity now to take this forward. So, I'm going to start with Councilmember Fine, who chairs this, and have him make a couple of comments. You do have what could be a motion in front of you.
Thank you, Madam Niss. So, thank you very much, staff, Michelle especially, to you for coming up to speed on this complex issue and doing such a good job engaging with all of our residents and the many people involved in this. And thank you also to all of our public speakers and citizen volunteers. I think actually the staff recommendation here and what we recommended at Policy and Services really does incorporate and mark a turning point in the city, including lots of the feedback that many of you have pushed for for so long, and although not perfect, I think it's a good acknowledgement of that. I want to start with the premise that everybody up here on this dais, everybody on city staff, and everybody in the community wants to quote-unquote "solve this problem," right? None of us want airplane noise, we want to reduce it and fix that quality-of-life issue for Palo Altons without antagonizing our neighbors. But as is absolutely clear, working with the FAA has been difficult, to say the least, and I think it's clear that to them Palo Alto is quite a small fry. And so, that's a reality that we face in terms of government relations, which leads to a couple points that I think this motion gets to. First of all, we're looking at an increased focus on monitoring, we're doubling down on some of our regional cooperation efforts, and working with our congressional leadership on directives or updates to the FAA that may begin to solve this problem. I think this motion also is really important in that it is directing staff to provide support to our council members who serve on various bodies that are addressing this issue. That's a huge lift to those who are mentioned and working so hard on it. There's also a number of specific ideas which come straight from our communities. The subbullets were mostly incorporated from a list of concerns that residents, many of you came and spoke to us about at the Policy and Services community, and we decided to incorporate those changes, so we appreciate you all speaking up. There's also a focus on increasing our technical capabilities to improve our advocacy with our partners. So, I'm not going to make a motion, I want to hear from my colleagues, but I would be willing to support this as it is tonight. Two quick things. So, one, a bit of a caution. I think our role here in council is provide strategic and policy direction on solving this problem. We all acknowledge it exists, I think we understand the scope of it, and we want to fix it, but we have to be careful that we don't provide direction that is so specific or technical as to be unhelpful to our greater strategy of fixing this quality-of-life issue for Palo Alto. So, I'd encourage us all to think in those terms. The other quick thing is, I just wanted to remind us, last week, our meeting did go quite, quite long. It is 10:08 PM. We do have a rule that we try to finish all city business by 10:30. I promise you all, we're going to finish this one tonight, but I would encourage my colleagues to be concise and practice some brevity so that we can move this policy forward and begin to work on approaches to solving the jet noise issues in Palo Alto. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to kick this off.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Koo, who has been very involved, engrossed, and so forth in this.
Thank you, Madam Niss. I just, I had a couple of questions. Molly, in terms of the CADAx for the Surfer III, so can you explain to all of us the difference between going for a NEPA and a categorical exemption? Because right now, I understand Surfer III had gone through, had been implemented because of the categorical exemption. Now, is there any grounds on that where we can be looking at in terms of reaching out to the FAA, or even filing a lawsuit on that? I kind of want to understand that part.
Right, so, again, being careful to avoid undermining anyone who may wish to file, and it's not only our community, but other communities and citizen groups, homeowners who, you know, may be making these decisions. Congress allows the use of a categorical exemption, which is part of the NEPA process. It's one of the tiers of review. So, you're very familiar with the SEQA process, which is our state version, NEPA is the federal version, the categorical exemption is a tool that is available to the FAA by congressional action for this type of thing.
At what point does the categorical exemption get used?
In this case, when the FAA decides they want to use it, they are able to use it. It's authorized by Congress. The rights in NEPA are congressionally defined, and this is one tool that they are able to use.
So, in that case, then what does the citizens, or community, or cities have?
That's a very good question.
That you can't answer right now?
Well, perhaps I'm being rhetorical, and I could be a little bit more specific. So, folks have kind of taken an initial step of saying they hope that there is a legal action to be filed, but in order to file one, you have to identify a procedural error, a right that someone has that was not honored sufficiently under the process, and we don't see one here.
And then, some of the things that some of the community have come forth and requested for a petition to file, is there any possibility of doing that?
Right, so, again, so, I think.
Oh, petition to review, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, there's a, there would be a hope or a desire that there would be some way to say, "We want a second look at this." But in fact, Congress has said that the FAA gets to make these decisions, as long as they fit within certain, they follow certain procedures, which are very deferential to the FAA. So, you have heard a lot of folks identify they would like there to be a lawsuit or a petition for review, but we haven't heard a basis for that. In fact, what is the procedural error? What is the substantive right that's been violated? There, in, in federal law, there is not a right to be free on the ground from noise from aircraft. Okay, that, that's not a right that exists. We would like it to exist, we believe it should exist, and it would protect our quality of life, but in fact, there is not a statute that says that.
So, you know, I just wanted to also, somebody brought up the San Francisco G-Bass that was going to be implemented, and if Palo Alto has any involvement in that, and as Michelle said, we don't, it's something that the airport does, but during the presentation as the liaison to the San Francisco Roundtable, at the presentation, the airport staff did mention that they would be constantly reaching out to the community to get feedback and to get input. So, that's something that, as the liaison, I will. So, that's something that, as the liaison, I will continue to keep track of, I'll keep track of, and will report back to, to the community here, as well as to council. Then also, you know, I, I think that, you know, we're all, as a region and as a city, working towards reducing noise and emissions from airplanes, aircraft. However, you know, having served on the San Jose South Lo Ad Hoc Committee, it's been seven weeks, and May 18th will be the last meeting date, so it'll be eight weeks. Throughout that seven weeks that I have been attending those meetings, well, actually, six weeks, and council member, Vice Mayor Phil Seth had to take, had to take the last one because I was absent. Throughout those weeks, we've been working with the FAA continuously, and had back-and-forth questions and recommendations, and, and at the end, we found out, just before I was leaving to go out of town, that there was a new procedure that came about, and that was only because Mountain View and Los Altos had a consultant who accidentally found it. And so, therefore, we had to really scramble to get our comments in within that one week, because it had already been out there for quite a while, before the consultant found it. So, looking at this, I don't suspect the FAA will ever come and notify the city of Palo Alto or any city of any new procedure. It's always going to have to be us finding it and being proactive in, in knowing what is going on. And so, with that, you know, we're kind of on our own in doing this, and therefore, we have to be, as you said, bold, somebody said bold, and move forward. So, I would like to make a motion, I'd like to move staff's motion to, from the Policy and Services recommendation, but I'd also like to add that we have a fast-track process as some of the members of the community mentioned. Because I do fear, based on the last incident that had taken place with the new procedure that we never found about, we never found out about, that we do need to have eyes on it. And with that, I think we should have a technical consultant that is on board, watching this, and Michelle is doing an absolutely fabulous job, you know, jumping in and being all understanding of all these technicalities. But I think that we do need a technical consultant watching over this, so that any discoveries that come up, we can be proactive in getting our comments in, and also for you, Molly, that, you know, you can prepare your next step.
Lydia, let's, hold on just a second, so I can get you a second.
I'll suck up the motion if you can get the language up there.
Okay. So, hire a technical consultant to assist with a fast-track process by the end of June 2018, to include both a quality, a qualify phase and a legal filing phase. And to allow the city, if necessary, to file a complaint within 60 days of the FAA change.
You've seconded it, or you haven't?
Tom seconded.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, Tom, you seconded this motion, are you reading it?
I have more, though.
So, Lydia, do you wish to speak further to your motion?
I actually have more for my, for my additions to this motion.
Oh, so you weren't done with the motion?
I wasn't done, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so, hang on a minute, so, while Lydia continues her motion.
I'd like to have a letter written to the FAA and congressional reps, representatives, as a response to the FAA update on Phase II report from November of 2017, as well as April of this year. I think that, you know, not writing a letter basically gives, can construed as a waiver, and I want to make sure we have our responses available. Then also, I would like to correct the staff report that Menlo, that we follow Anna Eshu, Congressional Member Anna Eshu's agreement from 2000, from the year 2000, that we follow that at 5,000 feet to the Menlo waypoint, and not what was at the recommended 4,000 and 5,000 for instrument and visual. Then I have also on page five of the staff report, the last sentence of Item D, starting from "therefore, while this solution demonstrates a willingness on the part," I'd like that last sentence to be removed, because I think that is an opinion versus, versus just putting the report out. I think that's it.
So, you want the last sentence removed?
Mm-hmm.
So-
So, Item D on page five.
Is that precise enough? Can you guys get down, last sentence removed?
So, that would go over the numbers.
Okay, so, so if you can go help Beth with that.
This, Mayor, just may I make a couple of comments, not, not just related to this, but in general, in this evolving draft motion? There are threads of things that are, let's just say, more easier to fulfill with existing capacity, and other things that probably need to be more intentional without being prescriptive. So, for example, our ability to meet a fast-track process by that date, we would have, I mean, we may be precluded by own procurement rules or something else to be able to do that. So, we want to capture ultimately what the council's direction is, but, you know, to understand, this is looking like it will be complicated enough, we're going to have to come back and, you're going to have to let us huddle and talk about what it takes to respond, and we'll have to figure out how we do that, whether it's in a week even, give the council some sort of a memo or report back on, on yes, 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 well, maybe, and then clearly, if you have some things, there are potentially some significant cost implications, right? I mean, we're talking about possibly changing some directions, I don't know where you're going to go, or ramping things up significantly, and you're going to need to authorize those decisions. So, I'm just putting that out, just in a general way, and then the last-
Just where we start with hire a technical consultant, is that, is that the area you're referencing?
Well, I, I kind of going to leave Michelle to, I mean, I'm trying to think about how you can be most effective to deal with your intent and not get us into back-and-forth wordsmithing here all night, but to let us settle down and-
Are you asking for a language like direct staff to develop a fast-track process?
Yeah, what, I mean, whatever it is, you know, I mean, clearing in your intention. And the only other thing I do want to say, it's, I understand the intent on the, trying to think about how we, how we deal with the intentions of the changes to the staff report, which is already finished and done. I mean, we don't sort of go back and edit and change something that's been completed in that regard, because it is a staff report that exists, but clearly, there is some desire to express that in some way on a going-forward basis, to take this look at it, rather than the way we express it in the staff report. So, if there, and I think you just, so that you don't, you're not here until 2:00 in the morning, I think you need to think of some general ways to signal intention, direction to the staff, with us to return to you with some feedback on this.
So-
I'm not, I'm not doing this to dodge it, I'm doing this so we can be effective in responding to what you're asking.
No, I believe I understand, and I think the, the part that's difficult is that we have, we have the, the staff report with a motion. What we don't have is information on what, how we identify the technical consultant, nor what budget we would need, nor what our fast, fast-track process by the end of June would actually allow us to do.
So, I don't know if Lydia's done, if I could speak to the second, maybe I have some suggested language tweaks that might, might help.
You have an offer from us, too?
I think so, I think so. It's always, Lydia is okay with it.
Tom, if I could just finish, the reason we have a, a date to perform is simply because as we move forward, there's going to be more actions that's going to come, either from the FAA or from the congressional members, especially with the reauthorization bill that's going to be going for vote or finalization in August, you know? And so, we, we can't sit back and wait for when we discover or hire a technical consultant. And as, as it is, we had two procedures that came up, flight procedures, that kind of came and went, and so, we don't know if they're going to come up with more. It can happen at any time, and we need somebody to be watching over us, I mean, watching over the city of Palo Alto. We, right now, we have really kind neighbors, Mountain View and Los Altos, who has helped us out greatly by informing us about this new procedure, which was, which was, which Vice Mayor Phil Seth and the rest of the group that day had asked, the Ad Hoc Committee had asked to be, to be put, to, to slow down. So, I think this is really important, that we have an expectant date. So, while I'm not bound by June 2018, I want to know when we can expect that.
So, I mean, again, I didn't want to get into this too much, but it's more to be able to say as quickly as possible, for example, and then we can come back and tell you what that is after we have looked at it, as opposed to just, I mean, we may be fine, it's just, with all due respect, the council gets upset if we didn't include a, something in your packet for you to read as part of a decision, and you are on the spot issuing new directives and decisions right now, without any ability for us to even reflect on what they are. So, that, that's not a criticism of you all, but you need to leave us some wiggle room, so we can then report back to you and say, "We got this, we got this, we got that, this takes more discussion, here are the implications," that's all.
When can staff come back?
And I'm assuming there's going to be more amendments to this, so that's why I-
So, when can staff come back?
Well, so, I'm, I'm not dodging that, I, I mean, I'm saying it's as quickly as possible, but I'm only saying, I only interject it now because I'm expecting we might get more amendments like this from other council members, and if you could be thinking about that as you word this.
Let me try this, because I, I'm, what I'm hearing is, you know, what I hear fairly often from Councilmember Holman, which is, we've, we've added things that are not already flushed out in this report, and that is going to make this somewhat difficult for you to actually deliver on what this, what this asked for. I need to know if, rather than including, after H, I think the next one should be I, it looks like a B, should it be an I?
So, again, if, if I could maybe speak to the second, I-
Pardon?
If I could maybe just speak to the second, I think maybe I could-
Well-
Help clarify a couple of things.
What I need to, what I need to know, though, is, are we going to include this part here with, starting with hire a technical consultant?
Well, that's the part I'd like to talk to you.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so first of all, if council members could look at packet page 205, I think part of the unanimous Policy and Services vote included these items, one, two, and three. And two in particular is this fast-track process, so, it's not, it wasn't in the staff motion, but it was what we unanimously voted for. And we also unanimously voted for writing this letter to the FAA. So, I think, I think Lydia's motion was trying to capture that, and as far as I'm concerned, I think Policy and Services agreed with that. So, I actually emailed some language earlier before Lydia made the motion, I don't know if, if you guys could pull that up.
This was related to the legal, the three-part legal related stuff?
Yeah, so, it basically was the same idea as Lydia had, it's just in my language, and I, and I would add, based on the conversation, to direct staff at the very beginning there, to bring to council as fast as possible, you know, a, and then just continue there, a plan.
Tom, was this discussed here, was this discussed in-
In Policy and Services?
Yeah, we incorporated it into the motion, and it was part of our motion.
So, on two, on, just to be clear, on page 205, which is a letter from Mary Jo Fremont?
Yes.
And you incorporated that?
So, we discussed it, and we all agreed with it, and we said we would move the staff motion with the inclusion of these three items. I think staff included a lot of it and worked it in, but for me, at least, the plan to have some kind of fast-track legal process was pretty important. And so, again, Lydia, if you could take a look at, at my language, I, I think it's the same idea as yours, that we would, we would have staff evaluate and bring back to council, plan as fast as possible, let's support a litigation strategy and support a both legislative change, and the best approach for filing a timely lawsuit within 60 days in an appropriate event, and that that would include even working on a multi-city legal, legal alliance, defining the process to monitor FAA changes, and evaluate retaining Kaplan-Kirsch or another expert. So, I think I'm trying to capture your idea about the technical expert, about doing it as fast as possible. And I guess the one thing I didn't have in mind was the response to the, to the FAA letters, which I, I thought we had, but apparently, we hadn't responded. So, I don't know, would you accept that language? And then we could add the request to follow up on the letters.
I think my, my only concern is, so, I think the technical consultant is actually pretty important, given what we had experienced with the Mountain View, Los Altos.
It seems like Kaplan-Kirsch, especially like the LA lawsuit, is that kind of expert they've been monitoring.
Kaplan-Kirsch might be too expensive, though.
We'd like the opportunity to evaluate that for you. Kaplan-Kirsch are very expert attorneys, but they may not be the most cost-effective, we may have a better cost-effective way. What, I think what the council is getting at, which is also a gap piece for us on the staff side, is the identification of these various little things that FAA may bury in the congressional record or in the federal register, we, we aren't reading that every day, the federal register, so-
You're not.
What's that?
You said you're not.
We are not.
Right, right.
We have other work that we're doing for you.
I know, I know.
Right, once we are aware of a potentially actionable item, then we have a good process in place to work with our expert attorneys, Kaplan-Kirsch are on retainer with my office, and they, Peter Kirsch answers his phone for me every day when I call him, I don't call him every day, but he responds immediately.
Yeah.
I can get on your agenda on a very short notice, I need 72 hours to do that.
Lydia's asking, how do we give you direction to close that gap ASAP?
Yes, so, I think we understand that's what the council would like, and so, I think we would like the legal team and the managers team to look at various options for doing that, and it very well may involve, I don't know if Jim has some additional thoughts on this, some, some consulting dollars, and whether those are lawyers or, or non-lawyer folks who will do this monitoring and assist us, I, I can't answer that as I sit here.
So, you're asking council to let you investigate and make the call, whether it's a consultant, or whether it's Kaplan-Kirsch, or somebody else, as opposed to specifying, "Do it this way"?
That's, that's my suggestion, is that you give us some, some time to, to look at that and come back to you, and I think we can get back to you with at least a status update, if not something in place before your break.
So, again, trying to get some motion language, if we edited C there to just say, "evaluate retaining expert-" So again, trying to get some motion language, if we edited C there to just say evaluate retaining expert, expert consultants?
Technical and legal expertise.
Just say, yeah, expertise.
Technical and?
Well, staff can come back with their recommendation.
We can, I mean, I think either one's right. It says evaluate retaining technical or legal expert.
Okay.
And I mean, the main thing is, you need to tell us what you're doing here. But you need to tell us essentially what you want to try to accomplish and the sense of urgency. And then we'll come back and tell you, okay, here were what the best options are, here's what it costs, here's what we might need, et cetera, et cetera. And we may not have to wait to put it on an agenda. We may be able to send the council just a memorandum that would be a prelude to scheduling something for action, if we need action.
So Jim, I.
It will be public, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm asking for your help in crafting the language here. I mean, or tell me what, how we can go about it, so that we don't miss the opportunity in terms of making comments or complaints or filing a lawsuit, et cetera. I don't want to have 2014 happen again. I want this time that we do it right, and that we have people on board that can notice us immediately and give you the opportunity to what you need, to do what you guys need to do.
So, I mean, we see?
I think all of those work. I mean, I can tell you, I have already begun conversations with the city attorneys for the cities in Santa Clara County about the airplane noise issue. And we can build on those, and also potentially build on new South Bay Roundtable, which should ultimately include those cities and then also some cities in Santa Cruz County. I guess one clarification I would ask, I'm not sure the council's intention around plan a litigation strategy in support of legislative change. I think our legislative effort is a direct effort through the federal lobbyists directed by the manager's office.
So, so I didn't really get to speak to it, I was just trying to get language out. I will speak to this motion if we can agree to language. So I was just trying to get the language out first.
Okay, maybe when you get, when you speak to it, you'll explain if there's a specific intention around that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so again, I just, Lydia, I'm just trying to get some language we can agree to.
Well, I mean, again, I just think evaluate retaining the necessary technical or legal expertise. And that, I'm going with Molly. These things are designed to be referencing the prelude sentence that you have, right? Technical or legal expertise in relation to planning a litigation strategy or a legislative strategy or a.
And being able to file within 60 days, yeah.
Right.
So.
So the same thing Lydia was saying, but I think it's clearer.
Again, the one part that's missing, I think Lydia, is the response to the FAA letters of November and April, which we could add as a separate bullet point, if staff's okay with that.
And can you also add in there that in future, for future letters that come, for future reports that are issued, that we come up with a system to respond to them immediately? That was something that you said, Michelle, earlier.
So, we would like to direct staff to respond to FAA letters?
Yeah, to evaluate and respond.
To evaluate and respond.
I think it's FAA reports.
FAA reports. To, I think it's to the November and April reports and future FAA reports. So just super quick, so people have said there are successful examples of lawsuits. The sustained effort of Newport Beach is impressive, and they had different circumstances. I'm not saying we're in the circumstance, but I think their stamina was impressive. And they got some things. And I think it's clear that there has been a real change to our community. The, I mean, it's getting late. I had some questions about the Surfer Star, again, the letter from Kirsch, the Kirsch memo was public, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. So in there, he said that they couldn't identify any NEPA documentation that might, to support that action, and that I think that might have been an opening. And again, it gets really back to this idea of having some kind of monitoring process in place where we can understand some of these very complex things quickly.
So that Kirsch memo was drafted very early, when this was just forming. And so I think since then, our wonderful active community members have identified some more specific items there. But if you'll recall, that was not the determinative dynamic that caused the council to say, "This is not the right time, and this is not the right action to sue over."
Yeah, and so just some thoughts on kind of legal arguments that I just wanted to make publicly. Again, was, you know, we have a protected baylands, which is unusual in cities in the peninsula. So, in future changes, should consider environmental impacts to the baylands and parks that we have. That future changes should highlight impacts to our historic districts and historic buildings, which again, I think is, is an issue under NEPA. And then again, this last point, which we've been talking about, that we need some kind of system in place so we can respond quickly. And, and so again, my understanding, and I hope the council agrees, is that we had voted unanimously at PNS to have these things. And, you know, really, and if staff's comfortable with this addition, I think that's really just the intent, that we, we understand where we are today, and that we want to try to monitor this and find a means to start to put some legal pressure on the FAA when we have an actionable action, so.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember DeBois, I still think we need clarification, cleanup on the initial language under what is still labeled be direct staff, as fast as possible, a plan, as possible to plan a litigation strategy.
Oh, so the legislative change, so, so again, I want to be careful about the closed session, but I think part, part of what we've seen in other cities is a legal strategy that has actually resulted in legislative change. And I thought, I thought that was a bit of, I'm trying to remember which city, if it was Phoenix or Newport Beach, but basically just.
I think that's why, maybe why we're.
Being the squeaky wheel had actually gotten them more attention.
Right, so I think that's why we're a little confused. I think what, what those cities' efforts resulted in was administrative level changes, where the FAA may have made some, some change to its procedures. When, when we hear the word legislation, we think of acts of Congress. And I'm not aware of.
Okay.
Of that. And if that, so that, I was trying to sort of suss out, was that, you're expecting that our Congress folks will be more responsive to lawsuits to the ever, not really.
We can drop that phrase if that phrase doesn't make sense.
What word would you use?
It, what? Yeah, to support administrative, you know, potential.
Procedural changes.
Procedural changes.
To, to improve the situation in Palo Alto.
Yes, that's.
And investigate the best approach for tiling, for filing timely lawsuits, make it plural, within 60 days of an appropriate, relevant new event or whatever, right?
Yep.
I mean, that's what the intent is.
That's the intent, yeah.
And then those three things are related to that. If we need to retain technical or legal expertise, we come back to you on that and demonstrate that, okay?
Well, thank you.
Lydia, are you okay with that?
I am, just a couple of edits. On V, item C, I would like to see and, not or. Because technical and legal, very different.
Again.
Right, we always work with, with technical folks to, yes, they're complimentary, that's correct.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, again, I think we're trying to be descriptive, not prescriptive as much as possible.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't help it.
And is okay, I mean, we're going to evaluate both of them and report back, so.
And.
You just want to take out A here, don't you?
A?
It's refining A. Time, you want to file timely assets.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, direct staff to develop a system to evaluate and respond to the November and April and future FAA reports, right? Can I? Can I expect those letters to be written pretty soon? Thank you. So correcting the record. So Jim, you said that we kept this, the staff report, it's written as it is. Can we not amend the staff report in terms of the verbiage that was in there?
So, I mean, I don't. Councilmember Coos, I would encourage you not to do that. The staff report really comes from the manager's office, and it's at a moment in time. And it's not intended to be the perfect statement of any situation or analysis of a complex issue, an evolving issue like this. And so I think if we get into going back in time and trying to change things, and we get into questions about our official record and the website and all of that, I think it makes a lot more sense for the council just to inform the staff of your view on that issue. And you could even make it as a motion, not to do anything, but just to note your, you know, and staff should note council's view that, whatever. And then, and then that will become absorbed then as the, as the staff is working on the issue going forward.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't even think you necessarily have to automatically reference the staff report. If, if your motion is speaking to a different interpretation or a different direction, you simply state that, and the council's direction supersedes our opinion that we offered in a staff report, is the idea. And you would not want to have to get into, you know, I mean, you overrule us, and you just tell us what it is that you want us to do. That's what you just need to do.
I think what I'm hearing is Councilmember Coos would like sort of future reports to be done differently.
So can you help us with that? What, how that would be worded to us, so we would know? With still some ability to be forgiving, if we get it wrong.
You know, I might just go with, with what Molly suggested in terms of having to add to the motion that, well. It, I guess I'm kind of not comfortable with it saying that it's not likely to produce any improvements over the, from the current state, and will shrink in value, because this is something that we don't know right now. It mean to say, maybe it will shrink in value, you know, because.
The message I'm hearing is that you'd like the staff to vigorously reduce, resist any shrink in value. I think the staff was trying to set a realistic expectation as things go forward. But I, what I'm hearing is you would like to, you know, the direction is that we're to resist that, with, we're to advocate for it to be the same or bigger to the extent we're able to.
That, and also, I don't want to just kind of say not likely to produce any improvement, because we're always going to be fighting for improvement. So, you know, this kind of language in here kind of demonstrates that we're just going to lie back and let them walk all over us, and we're not going to do that. So, this is, this is why I am concerned about this language. And if you can help me with that, so that, so if that's, you know, so that might be where the direction I'm going in terms of saying, let's not have language in there that says we're not going to have, we're always going to fight it.
Yes, that's tremendously helpful clarification, Councilmember, thank you. I think it might be helpful just to orally get on the record the staff intent when drafting the report, that it was not, in fact, to suggest what was inferred by the council member, members of the public, and others who may have read it that way. The original intent of the language was not to suggest that this is not worth doing. But in fact, was the opposite, which is, I think, what council was referring to a moment ago, which is to manage expectations, that if the FAA says, "Well, we'll throw your bone over here," for us to be able to say, you know, that's not enough. That's not enough, because this isn't going to create as much meaningful solution as we need for our community. So, the intention on the part of staff was to underscore our disappointment with the limitations of what the FAA was offering, rather than concurring with them. So I want to get that on the record, if that helps clarify the record of anything that, that the memo may have been perceived as putting in stone somehow, that we've clarified that.
So, Councilmember Coos, are you comfortable with staff kind of understanding your point? And I don't know if we need it in the motion, just.
I am with Michelle.
Yeah, absolutely, understood. And we'll, we'll give double thought to that when we craft our language in the future. Thank you.
So lastly, I'm so sorry, but lastly, the 5,000 feet Menlo waypoint going with Congresswoman Anna Eschew's original 2,000 agreement, I want that to be on record, that that's what we in Palo Alto are following. So does that need to go on this motion?
Need to actually go in the motion?
If I may.
Or can that go in as a guidance?
I'm asking Michelle.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, the council position, item number two under council positions is adherence to agreement to increase altitude of aircraft over the peninsula whenever possible. So, again, as staff, we tend to try to propose language for council to provide as guidance fairly broadly, that would give us a little more flexibility when we're, say, crafting letters in response to FAA reports and things like that. If you tell us, what we want to advocate for is increasing altitude over the peninsula whenever possible, we'll keep taking that position whenever we opine in response to something. We want it high, and we want you to do everything you can to keep it high.
With the understanding our baseline is at 5,000 feet. So it's going to go higher, not any lower.
Yes, and unfortunately, this, the FAA has not honored that, which is what the staff report was seeking to point out, that the FAA is, is not, is not flying at, at that high level, is not directing planes at that high level. And, and the staff report was seeking to say, "We should continue to advocate for the high levels." So if that's, if there's some confusion about that, what we're hearing from you is you want it high, which was what we were trying to say.
Right, okay, as long as we understand it's at 5,000.
Yep.
I think I'm done.
Is that it? I mean, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, we've now had our 20-minute motion, so. Tom, do you want to speak more to your second? Okay, so I have Cory and then Karen.
Oh, I had a lot of comments, and I'm going to cut them a lot shorter in the interest of time. I know people are tired, and some are recovering from or fighting off colds, and I appreciate their presence here anyway, thank you. Want to thank staff for really good work on this. This is obviously not something we're done with. I think that the way the council and the staff is looking at this issue has substantially changed in the last year, even the last couple of months. I guess I'd say that our leaning on hopes and prayers is not really going to be our strategy going forward. I will admit that I was cautiously optimistic during most of the year of 2017, that between all the recommendations from the Ad Hoc Committee that had been created, and all the meetings, and all the recommendations, and everything we heard from the FAA back in 2017, I was cautiously optimistic. We might see some relief from the FAA under their own administration authority. I think at this point, we see that as less likely. And keeping a close eye on every little change that the FAA makes or authorizes in the flight, the airspace around us is important. So I really appreciate that in this motion. I think that in the, you know, there was a concern raised about making sure that we're addressing some misinformation about Palo Alto's role. I saw a few people who are still in the audience today at a meeting with Quiet Skies down in. down in, gosh, was it Saratoga or Los Catos, just about a week and a half ago. I was there as well. I know that councilmembers Koo and Vice Mayor Phil Seth were unavailable to attend, so I went and was happy to, to represent Palo Alto and with people from Santa Cruz all the way up to Atherton, councilmembers and committee members, I spoke up there and said, you know, shared some of our recent challenges and expressed that Palo Alto, you know, speaking as a member of the council, saying, we, we've, we've been very clear that we do want to work with our neighbors. We are not looking to shift noise to somebody else. You know, I, I saw it as important that we address the misinformation that has been floating around about Palo Alto's approach. And I think my colleagues have been doing this too. I know I have been talking to my contacts who are on city councils and neighboring cities, trying to address this rumor that's out there still, that Palo Alto does not want to work with others. And I think we're actually making progress addressing that rumor. I think that people are realizing that we're here to play ball, working collaboratively, and that that will be useful in pursuing various strategies, such as what's outlined in this motion. Given that I don't think we're going to see much administrative relief from the FAA, to be honest, I do think that the other side of lobbying, going to the legislative side, is important too. So I just want to ask, are we working with our lobbyists on the legislation that is going? I understand there's legislation going from the House to the Senate. And I just want to ask staff if you want to remind us where we're at and where that legislation is at and how much we're communicating with our lobbyists about that.
Thank you. Yes, the, our lobbyists in DC are monitoring the FAA reauthorization bill. It passed the House of Representatives and it's been sent over to the Senate for action. Unfortunately, neither of our senators from California are on the aviation subcommittee, but it may not even go through committee and just go straight to the floor for a full vote. Our lobbyists have confirmed for us what some of you may have read in the press, which is that Mitch McConnell has stated that the priorities for floor consideration in the Senate are approval of administration and judicial appointments. And they're really trying to keep the floor votes cleared for filling vacancies. And so getting other kinds of, any kind of legislative votes in, in between that before the recess is going to be tough. And then where this falls in the priorities of the Senate is unclear. So our lobbyists are checking in with staff on the aviation subcommittee to see whether or not this bill is considered a priority by leadership or not, which is hard tea leaves to read even when you're calling the insiders. So the short answer is, we're, our lobbyists are monitoring it, trying to nudge it forward and poised to let us know if and when it will be ready for a vote. And, and as the members of the council will recall who were on the trip to Washington, DC, we did meet with our Senate representatives as well as our House representatives and they're well aware of our concerns on these issues. And we can work through our lobbyists to, to reinforce all of that as the bill comes up for a vote. Our lobbying will be more effective if we wait a little bit until it gets closer to a vote, so we know what kinds of amendments are starting to develop, so we can lobby on those particular amendments.
And I, I think that's important to have that, even that brief conversation here tonight on the record in public as a reminder, so that we're working both locally as a city, improving our process for keeping track of things as a region, and then also making clear that we have a process as well at the federal level. And it all levels, city, region, and federally with our lobbyists, trying to have systems in place, you know, here, you know, basically tripwires to, to detect when there's an opportunity to take action that could potentially provide relief. And that, that level of diligence and awareness is, I think, the, the big change we need to have going forward. So I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Aaron?
I'm good, actually.
Adrian? Okay. Greg?
So yeah, thank you, staff, for your work on this. It seems like there's been a lot of effort put into this by the residents, by staff, by councilmembers here. So thank you for everyone's work. But unfortunately, I would say that the problem is still not solved. In fact, I, I think it's, it's worse. And so I wanted to just follow the question that councilmember Wobak started, which is, so there's, I, I think in the motion, there's a lot of good legs for the legal angle. But I think that's one-pronged strategy is to try the legal side. I think the other strategy, and this is something which I, I would like to see, or maybe I don't know if Policy and Services could talk more about what was done here. But I would like to also see what we can do on the political side. So I think lobbyist is actually the key because I, I, I'm not sure how much, you know, the legal system is a little bit unpredictable. But I would like to know either from staff or if Policy and Services, what, what have we done in terms of lobbyists? Because I, I guess I would like to see us pursue a political solution as well as a legal solution. So I think councilmember Koo really nailed it here on the, on the legal side, but what are we doing on the political side? So I don't know if, who knows more about this, but whoever does, if you could speak about that, that'd be great.
Sure, I can tell you that we have a long history in the city, far preceding me in terms of partnering with our legislative delegation at the federal level on this issue. Our representative, Congresswoman Anna Eschew, has been working on airplane noise for years and years. There's actually, on her website, there's a history of years and years of press releases and work that she has been doing on this issue. If you look at the reports that have come out of the FAA to the attention of our delegation, members Eschew, Spear, Panetta, they are fairly unprecedented. It's very, very rare for a federal agency to produce large thorough reports to a handful of members of Congress. So it's, it's a fairly significant accomplishment on the part of our delegation to get that kind of response from the FAA. I want to make clear, the city of Palo Alto has been extremely disappointed in the content of those reports. But procedurally, procedurally, the, the, the delegation's ability to elicit that level of responsiveness from a, from a federal agency is rather exceptional. So in answer to your question, the political activity around this has been substantial.
Well, I guess what I'm really trying to get at, I know our local representatives for the, well, our representatives who represent us locally on a federal level have been trying hard. I get that. But what I'm talking about in terms of lobbyists are people who really know the system really well, the FAA really well, really well, and can help grease the schiz, so to speak, and, and gain our point of view, not just heard, but actually followed. And so, so I don't know if, I don't, well, let me ask this, we, we hire lobbyists right now, right? We have some on a state and federal level. Would it make sense for, and I think the lobbyists though, they do, they handle a lot of, a wide variety of issues, correct? Not just airplane noise?
Well, actually, we're, we're fortunate to be using a lobbying firm where our primary point of contact in the lobbying firm is the former head of congressional relations for the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
So he.
So that's, that sounds good.
His connections at the Department of Transportation were one of the reasons why we were able to secure a meeting with so many high-level decision-makers at FAA when the council traveled to Washington, DC in March.
Do we know who the preeminent lobbyist is for the FAA?
I'm not sure I know what you mean.
I mean, who's the, so usually it might be someone that used to be heading the FAA or be pre-senior in FAA, you know, when the Trump administration turned over, there might be someone that, you know, there's probably someone that replaced that person. But, you know, I guess, I've been hearing about this issue for years and, and hearing about it, not just here, but literally hearing about it. And it is truly getting worse. And I'm just thinking that, you know, maybe we need to hire a lobbyist firm that is renowned for getting stuff done, right? Not just getting meetings, not just generating reports, but actually getting stuff done. And I realize there's probably a considerable expense for it, right? Because lobbyists aren't very cheap, for sure. But perhaps if we band together with other local cities, help pay, pay for this because it impacts all of us, right? Not just, not just Palo Alto. But I, I guess for me, I would like to see, not just, not just for us to pursue a legal solution, because, you know, you don't know how long that's going to take, right? The court system's pretty slow and you have to have an opening, that, a legal basis to actually sue. But I guess I would also like to see us, see us pursue a more aggressive political angle with lobbyists, right? Trying to find a lobbyist that is, is specialized in this, right? I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if other cities have hired people to change, we can't be the only city to be thinking about this, right? There's got to be other cities out there who's hired lobbyists and which lobbyists have been effective. Because all these lobbyists are effective because of the relationships that they have, they know how to navigate the organization. Are we, have we done that research already? Do we know who these people are? Have we already tried reaching out to them?
We actually have done that research. It's one of the reasons why we use the lobbying firm we use, because they are very well-connected with the US Department of Transportation's staff, as, as I previously mentioned. In addition, we've done our research with respect to banding together with other communities that are trying to affect federal policy, which is why part of the staff recommendation is to work with the NOISE group, which is a federal advocacy group on this particular topic.
Has our current lobbyists, have they ever been successful in gaining the flight path change for a community?
That's not really done through legislation. Policy is changed through legislation, not flight paths. That's really an administrative action, so.
That's, I agree with you. So I don't necessarily think it's going to be an act of Congress that's going to solve our problem, right? But something that's influential with the current FAA administration, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not necessarily talking about, you know, lobbying our House Representative or Senate. I'm talking about lobbying, lobbying the FAA, right?
Well, councilmember Tanaka, I can assure you, one of my previous jobs was as the deputy chief of staff for the US Department of Transportation, and there is no single lobbying firm that carries that kind of power with any federal agency in my experience.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, this is why I'm asking. But I just, it just seems like we've been trying really hard and long and very little results. And I think a lot of people are very frustrated. And so are you saying there's nothing else we could do politically? There's no one else we could hire? There's nothing else we could do to try to sway the FAA?
I think what I'm saying is we're doing everything we can in that regard and I feel pretty good about our efforts.
Well, I mean, that's fine. If, if you're doing everything you can, then that's, then you are. But I, I wanted to ask just because.
It's a good question.
I think, I think members of our public have, have been frustrated by this for, for years now and we haven't seen much results, which is very disappointing.
Agreed.
Well, if, if I just might add, I mean, I, I, I know that it's frustrating, the progress being made on a regional collaborative that is ultimately designed to build more political clout than just one small city, Palo Alto. As long as we're fractured and divided, it's much easier to ignore us or point out, well, your neighbors feel differently. That being said, I mean, our council is putting a lot of effort in this and the, the truth is, you're the political representatives with the other local political folks. It's actually a little hard for you to ask us what to do. We can support you all and that's what we're trying to do. But I, I think that, you know, we've, we've had three to four members of our council regularly and actively involved on this, this issue. And, and I think it would be a mistake to say that that's been unsuccessful. I mean, I think the question is, how do we, in the same way we're saying Newport Beach or whoever has been, you know, was driving this for decades to build this thing, what is it going to take for us and the council? And how could we plan the legislative strategy to be most effective? And so lobbyists or other folks amplify the relationships that really you most effectively can do. We can do it somewhat on the staff level, staff to staff, but ultimately we've got to come to our council and we've got to then, you know, I mean, think about other issues we're dealing with on just how to get, say, funding for GRADE SEP. I mean, that involves a local political piece along with other aspects, so. I mean, I'm just more saying there's, there's still more evolution of our work that needs to take place.
Oh, I did think one other question. So. I know. So, I guess politically, how did the NOISE get pushed into our city? Politically, how did this happen?
I don't understand the question.
Well, I mean.
I could answer it technically.
Well, I know, I know what technically happened, right? But the question is, what, why, why did that happen, right? I guess, because when I moved here in 2004, the NOISE wasn't like it is now. In fact, today was a good contrail day. I saw like a lot of airplanes flying and you could see the airplanes fly all over the sky, the contrails. But like what, what, why, why, why didn't, like.
Shut you off, but it's after 11:00 and I know we've still got two speakers. It would be helpful if you would be willing to get together with Michelle and get that whole background. It's a long, long story of how that actually happened.
Okay, well.
And the FAA is going to tell you it's all about safety.
Okay. I mean, okay.
I can give you a short answer.
Why don't you give a short answer? Because I think, I think a lot of people would like to know.
I can give you a short answer, which is part of, part of how we ended up with these more intense, focused routes that are creating a bigger impact in, in more focused areas, was an effort on the part of the FAA to become more efficient. And that's driven politically, because your question was the politics, what politics drove this. That's driven politically by a lot of competing interests in terms of public policy, including the economic benefits to the airline industry, to the airports, to the traveling public, to the economy. And those competing interests in terms of the movement of people and goods and the growth of, of flights in and out of airports all converged at a time when the technology was coming up to speed as well. So GPS came into play, satellite technology came into play. We recognized that we, we shouldn't be flying by radars anymore. We should be using satellite technology, which was, I think, a very good idea. But in, in the process of meeting the political drivers of those economic benefits and the process drivers of greater efficiency, the flights were moved into more refined paths, which impacted less numbers of people because they're less spread out over more communities. But the few communities that are impacted are impacted more deeply. So by, politically by the FAA's measurement, it is an improvement to have noise impacting less people. The problem is, we're the handful of less people who are getting more intensely affected and the metrics do not measure intensity in a way that helps us.
Thanks, thanks, hopefully, yeah. Actually, I, I thought this last discussion was kind of interesting. I wanted to tug on a thread that, you know, councilmember Tanaka was just tugging on in terms of sort of political activity, right? But, you know, I'm struck that, you know, Jackie Spear, I guess, proposed an amendment that would elevate the priority of, of, you know, residential concerns higher relative to efficiency, right? Obviously, safety is going to be stated, efficiency is code for airline profits, right? So, so, and, and I guess, I guess it went down 1,000 to 13 or something like that. Okay? So how did we, we're working with other cities in the region, but something, if you get at that level, I mean, that's really sort of a nationwide kind of thing. I mean, I assume that there's like, you know, you got 13 representatives in districts and then there's everybody else, you know, we all know the process, right? So how do we, how do we work at that level? I mean, is that something a lobbying firm could do that helps us with? Or, you know, you, you put up a couple of consortia that we've been parts of and not in the past, like there was one called NOISE or something like that. Is there, are there, you know, groups that we should be members of to sort of, to, to do that kind of stuff? I mean, how should that work?
Thank you, councilmember.
I realize I'm asking a question that Jim said, it's really our, our business, not yours, but okay.
No, it's, it's precisely why joining the NOISE group was part of the recommendation. And, and staff doesn't mean to suggest that that group is omniscient or all-powerful. They have limitations like anyone, but it is the one advocacy group that is trying to bring together communities across the country and their. the country and their legislative representatives and their lobbyists, and to strengthen in numbers, the cumulative voice on these issues.
So your advice is, that's a good one, is that we don't need, there's not some other three or something like that we should, okay? All right, thank you.
So I think that's it for those who are going to speak. I will speak truly briefly. Michelle Flaherty, thank you very much for patiently putting all this together for tonight, explaining it well. I particularly that last question, because I think, for those of you who are still hanging in, this really began with NextGen. And NextGen was not anything we had a choice in. It was put on us, and I don't think anyone realized at the time the ramifications it would have. I don't think there's anyone, more than the eight of us sitting here tonight, that would like to see something resolved. I know many of you would really like to file a lawsuit of some kind that could or could not have some good end to it. But I think, as you heard, with Newport, it was many years. Phoenix happened, they just catch something very early on before this came to the point it is now. And I know many of you already know this. I can see you nodding that you know this background. I think I'm going to stay on the same path that we did before, after we talked with the attorneys about a month ago, which said, stay vigilant, something probably will come up, which is just what this motion addresses tonight. But at that point, it wasn't clear that there was something that would be, that we could get our teeth into, or that an attorney could really bring to the kind of fruition that we want. So I think this is going in a good direction. Thank you, Lydia, for dogging this, which is just what you've done. And I know that Eric has been involved, Cory has been involved, and it's frustrating because if we talk about moving this pathway, as all of us know from going to regional meetings, we are not popular when we say, move the pathway so it affects that other city more than it affects us. And that has been a real frustration, because other cities, you know, say, we don't want the noise either, and we're sorry you have trouble, Palo Alto, but we don't want the same problem. And that's, you've asked why we don't get on all the committees. Sometimes we have not been invited to get on the committees. I don't think we were ever invited to go on the San Francisco Airport Roundtable. I think they rejected us for.
Well, we tried.
We tried hard. We tried for years to get on that, and we were never invited. So it's frustrating, it's frustrating for us, and our intent is to, as I said, dog this as much as possible, so that when something happens, we can jump on it in a hurry, and hopefully, eventually have a successful outcome. So thanks again to Ms. Flaherty, to staff, you've stayed late, and for those of you in the audience who've also stayed really late. But we're pretty well protected here. Have you been hearing planes go over?
Madam Mayor, you all are going to vote on the motion?
No, we're not going to vote on it. We're just going to skip it tonight. No, so that is my comment. I am supporting the motion, and with that, shall we vote? Jim, I'll bet you just want to go home. So that brings us to the end of our program, and I think those of you who really want to stick around for item nine, I guess you could do it.
Councilmember Comments.
No, remember, we moved that this morning. Eric and I looked at that early on and said, this is not going to fly. Thank you all for coming.
Councilmember Comments.
Yes, excuse me, councilmember comments, suggestions, whatever? There is absolutely nothing that's being shared. Okay, thank you all.